So it's 7:00 PM and we will reconvene. The, uh, this is the town council meeting for Fairfax of October 6th, 2021. And we started earlier with two appointments to town committees. And we're now ready to begin the regular meeting. Um, Michelle, do we need another roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, uh, we just interviewed and, uh, and actually appointed Jackie Engstrom to the Parks and Recreation Commission and Mitch Greer to the Climate Action Committee. Thank you, thank both of them for their applications. We, uh, I'll read the land, well, we can approve the agenda, I guess. That's next on the agenda. So approving the agenda and affidavit of posting. Do we have any comments on the agenda running?
Um, yes, Mayor, um, with respect, I would like to request of my colleagues that we continue item number six on consent.
Continue it to another meeting.
Yes.
Is what you're suggesting.
Yes, I would like, uh, I would like some more information before we move forward on the decision.
Um, I disagree with that proposal. I think we can pull it from consent and discuss it. And our chief of police is here to answer questions. Um, I think it's an urgent matter, so I think we should just pull it from consent.
But can we talk about it, um, when we're on consent?
Not if we pull it.
I think if we pull it, we can just move it to the, we can do it before the next items.
The, uh, the suggestion that considering that it might have been pulled, we were wondering whether, whether it might be because there've been some discussion and emails and considerations about it for sure. Um, what, uh, our town manager, Adam Pulitzer, has suggested is that if we pull it, we either put it before or after item number nine, which is the first item on the regular agenda. Um, I would propose putting it after item number nine. And the reason for that is because Chief Tavarranza will be on the call for item nine. And, uh, that way he can stay on the call for this and won't have to wait all night, which would happen if we put it at the end.
Um, I, I, I just, I differ. Um, my opinion is that, uh, given new information, and it's all very new, um, and some of the homework that I've done is we, we need a little bit more before making a decision like that. We have two major agenda items that a lot of people are here to, um, participate in. And so, uh, sticking that in before one of those items doesn't feel, um, doesn't feel right. And, uh, given that we have a meeting in two weeks, um, I request we bring it back.
I, I disagree. And if you want to make a motion, we can see if it fails. But I think Chief Tavarranza is here to talk about this issue. And he has done quite a bit of research. And so I think it's an urgent matter. So I think we should place it where the mayor suggests and where our town managers, managers suggest and discuss it then.
Um, I'd like to actually ask Chief Tavarranza, since he seems to be on the line, uh, where it would be possible to address this at the next meeting, which would be in two weeks, or whether it's urgent enough that we should address it tonight.
Hello, everyone.
Uh, good evening.
Hi. So we can discuss it at the next meeting, but this item is very urgent and it cannot wait. So I'd, I'd suggest that we talk about it tonight, if that's what you'd like to discuss, or keep it on consent, if that's something we can do. But I don't think that's what councilmember Goddard would like to do. But yes, we should definitely discuss it. It's an urgent safety matter and it affects the entire town and the service to the town.
Okay. So I will propose that we pull it from consent and, and put it, uh, after item nine before item 10.
Okay, I'll second that.
That sound okay with everyone? We don't need to take a vote on that? Okay, I mean, we can take a vote on, uh, then the approval of the agenda, but is there anything else that we need to consider for changes? Okay, so in that case, um, Michelle, I guess if you could take a roll call on the, or maybe we need a motion to approve the agenda. Yeah, so somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
And Michelle, if you could take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will read the land acknowledgement. Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. I'll read the meeting protocol, which is important and was set up years ago by a council preceding us, uh, for a very good reason. So, "The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility." And we will review the agenda at 10:00 PM. And we then review again at 11:30. And at both of those times, we can consider continuing items if we're not getting to them. But hopefully, we can get through the agenda. We have quite a number of announcements which are on the agenda, so, uh, for the public, you can read them. Uh, we've got fall curbside cleanup, October 4th through 8th, which is already in process. Um, you can put out extra waste on your regular garbage day. Marin Sanitary has all the information about that. Vacancies on boards and commissions, which you can contact our town clerk, Michelle Gardner, uh, about any of these, if you would like to apply. There's a community emergency preparedness committee, which is new. And so Fairfax residents are invited to apply to fill seats representing the stakeholders of the community at large, or certs, cert, the people who have, uh, I'm not sure whether that means people who have done the training or people who are involved in the organization, okay? Um, it sounds like from, from Goddard, uh, councilmember Goddard's nod that that's people who have done the training. Firewise Communities and Neighborhood Response Groups. Um, they, so that's the convergence, the Community Emergency Preparedness Committee that's looking for applicants. Climate Action Committee has up to four vacancies, that might be three now. Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, one vacancy remaining. Volunteer Board has one vacancy and the Open Space Committee has one vacancy. There is a take back day for, um, prescription drugs, including for yourself or for pets and electronics, um, October 23rd. And there'll be details to follow in the town newsletter. And the Fairfax Food Pantry continues to operate Saturdays, 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church. And I believe that Vice Mayor Hellman has a couple of announcements. And, uh, councilmember Goddard had an announcement as well. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, it's, uh, sort of with, um, mixed emotions that, um, I'm announcing a change in ownership of the Iron Springs Brew Pub. Um, I spoke with, uh, owner Mike Altman today and he advised that they are selling to an organization called Hen House Brewery, who they're based in Sonoma. And as I think everyone knows, Iron Springs has been an extraordinary community member, partner, contributor for 17 years. And, um, it's, I personally have many, many, many family memories there and, um, going to shows there. And so it's, um, it's definitely going to be a change. But I did speak to a co-founder and CEO of Hen House. And I, I know Mike and Ann Altman did, um, their due diligence in selecting, um, a good fit for Fairfax, just to share with you. The mission of Hen House is we value teamwork, quality, knowledge, and stokedness. We believe living these values creates jobs that don't just pay a living wage, they also help achieve goals we wouldn't do on our own. We believe in living wages and good benefits because we believe people have to be able to take care of themselves to, to achieve greatness at work. Um, so they're very focused on a, a smooth transition. They have some minor, um, renovations, um, but they really, really want to keep the, um, awesome staff who've been there very, very long time. So that's that announcement. Um, and then I also, um, just wanted to, um, share my thanks and gratitude for the concert on the 25th at Park and Rec and Susan Pascal Baron. Um, there is a violinist, um, in Parrot Park, Redwood Grove, that was just beautiful. And I want to encourage that concert series that I think is in development because I thought it just was, I know there was very well attended. I think there was about 70 people there and, um, got rave reviews. I enjoyed it very much, so thank you for that. That's it, thanks Bruce.
Good night.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I'd like to just fill in a little bit about the take back day. Um, it is on October 23rd. Um, and this is a take back day that did not, it, actually, it may have happened last year, but in a smaller scale. So this is going to take place at the Fairfax Market, uh, parking lot on the west side. It's usually at the Pavilion Parking Lot. Um, and it will be a full service take back. We will have an opportunity for people to drop off mattresses, uh, document shredding, um, e-waste. And as you said, um, we're working, uh, with, uh, the Fairfax Police with, uh, to, to host the, um, the Drug Enforcement Agency's Prescription Drug Take Back. So please make sure you're collecting your medications, uh, they don't go down in the toilet and, uh, they can be dropped off safely, um, at Take Back Day. On the 23rd, between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, the prescription drugs, uh, finish at 2:00 PM sharp. Um, so yes, and there will be more information in the newsletter. Um, and, uh, please collect your things to bring down to Take Back Day. Thanks.
Thank you for those details. Okay, so we will now open the, open up for the open time for public expression. And this is for matters not on tonight's agenda. And the, um, I'm just looking to see how many attendees we have. Uh, if you could actually raise your hand if you're, if you're intending to speak at open time, so we have an idea. We, uh, the way we're doing this now, and it seems to be working well, is that we are doing 30 minutes for open time at this point. And then we continue with our meetings so that we get to items while people are here to speak to them. And if there's more open time, uh, it's not, not completed, then we get to that at the end of the meeting. So we will open that up if, um, Clerk Michelle, if you would open the, open the, uh, the open time. And we'll have three minutes per person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I see four hands raised, starting with Colin McDonald, followed by Joe McGary, followed by Joseph Buenagel. Colin, um, you're unmuted now.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm, uh, Colin. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Hen House Brewing Company. Uh, I want to say a special thank you to Vice Mayor Hellman for the, uh, very kind introduction. Um, as she mentioned, um, we're taking over Iron Springs Brewing Company, uh, later this year. Uh, I know that, uh, a lot of folks are going to miss that, um, uh, that establishment a great deal, which is our affection for them as well. We're also going to miss them. And, um, I have a, a tremendous amount of respect and admiration for Mike and Ann who started Iron Springs. And we really want to, um, come to Fairfax as a continuation of the community-centric, uh, good employment and of course, good beer kind of brewery that they've been. And I really, really look forward to working with all of you, uh, in that regard. Um, I just want to give a quick kind of backstory on who we are. Um, we got started in, uh, 2012. Uh, so we're coming up on our 10-year anniversary. Um, we have 70 employees now. And, um, as the Vice Mayor stated, our mission is to create meaningful employment that enhances beer quality for the end consumer and creates wealth for our community. That's our very, very personal way of saying, if you take care of your employees, they'll take care of your customers, who will take care of your shareholders. Uh, we're really, really big on giving back to the community. Uh, just this year, we've, uh, created a donations committee within our company that's, um, taking all of our charitable contributions, whether beer donations for events or in cash, uh, contributions for, uh, larger causes, and delegated that out to, um, employees from every single department so that our company's charitable contributions to communities really represent the communities we actually live in and participate in. Um, I'm really, really excited about coming to Fairfax. I'm really, really excited about living up to the, uh, the obviously admired standard of conduct that, uh, Mike and Ann set at, uh, Iron Springs Brewing Company. And I'm very much looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Colin, and good luck.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by Joseph Buenagel. And Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, good evening, council. Um, 2020 census data reveals that since 2010, the population of black people in Marin, the most racially disparate county in California, has dropped 9%. Arrest data from all the law enforcement agencies in Marin.
Joe, just a second. If, if you, uh, intend to speak about the, the general racial equity and social justice issue, that will be, uh, agenda item number nine, I believe, this evening. So just, uh, if you're going to speak at that, then, then, uh, you wouldn't be speaking at this open time. Thanks, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no. Um, all right. So I'm going to start over, if that's okay. Um, I, I'm not clear, I can, you know, I'm speaking, I could possibly speak later, but I have a whole different set of things I'm planning on saying right now that is not related to the agenda item topic, just to clarify.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I was saying, uh, 2020 census data reveals that since 2010, the population of black people in Marin, the most racially disparate county in California, has dropped 9%. Arrest data from all law enforcement agencies in Marin from the last six years of that decade shows a black person in Marin was almost six times more likely to be arrested than a white person. And that black people were arrested at a rate of almost four times their demographic presence in Marin. We're expected to see a decline of the black population in Fairfax through the census data from 2010 to 2020 of almost 70%. Arrested data obtained from the Fairfax Police Department from the last six years of that decade shows that a black person in Fairfax was 20 times more likely to be arrested than a white person and that black people were arrested 18 times their demographic presence in Fairfax. Using these widely accepted metrics, the Fairfax Police arrested black people at a higher rates than any other agency in Marin. The data also revealed that the Fairfax Police Department is an aggressive police department for arrests, whose arrest versus population number is an alarming 1 in 35, which was second in the county to San Rafael PD and almost double the rate of the next highest police department, the Central Marin Police Authority, who arrested at a rate of 1 in 66 and was more than double Mill Valley Police Department's 1 in 73. These numbers don't happen by accident. There is a culture and a desire for establishing presence that needs to be addressed in this police department. It may be deeply woven into the 40, over 40 years of internal hires for the position of police chief, but it is in front of you now and is yours to deal with. The data is in for Fairfax and for all of Marin. It is time for this council and all elected officials to reckon with the fact that the institution of policing in this town and this county not only upholds status quo of being the most racially disparate county in Marin. Over the last decade, police agencies are driving that disparity and driving black people out of Marin. Over the last 16 months, elected officials have been willing to speak on the important issues of housing, education, and economic opportunities as the critical components they are in terms of addressing systemic racism. But the call now is to stand up to the biggest institution of racism in this county, the institution of policing. The data says you can no longer say we are different using the population disparity that policing is establishing to say that the statistics are anomalies. There will never be any equity or justice in this town or county until black people are saved from the bias of profiling that is being perpetuated by the Fairfax PD and every law enforcement agency in Marin.
Joe, that's been three minutes, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joseph Buenagel, followed by Jane slash John. And Jose, you're unmuted now.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, as Michelle mentioned, my name is Joseph Buenagel and I am a Fairfax resident, Fairfax resident on Wood Lane. I'm still new to my role as the Fairfax representative on the Marin Commission on Aging, uh, but in, enjoying it very much. My main message tonight is to extend the invitation to all to attend tomorrow's monthly Commission on Aging meeting, tomorrow, October 7th, from 10:00 to noon. It will be held on Zoom. I was able to post a meeting event on Nextdoor where the specific meeting information, including the Zoom link, is posted. These meetings, um, are always open to the public and they include an educational component for the first hour, um, which, uh, is of, of, of specific interest to the public, I believe. This month's featured presenters are the Deputy Cabinet Secretary, uh, in the Office of the Governor of California, uh, the Director of Marin Voad, the voluntary organizations active in disaster, and the COO of Vivalon. They will be discussing the impact of the pandemics, fires, and social unrest on California's older adults. I am sure the topic will be quite interesting. Uh, secondly, in addition to making the public aware of this meeting and that all are invited to attend, I also wanted to specifically extend the invitation to the town council, mayor and vice mayor to attend, if possible. And if not this month, then at an upcoming meter, meeting later this year. We would love to have you. Also, uh, given that the town council meeting typically falls the day prior to the Commission on Aging meeting, for me to come and give an announcement about the next day's meeting may be tough for those who like to plan. So for those who are planners and, um, would like to attend next month, I wanted to note the planned educational portion of the November 4th Commission on Aging meeting will be a presentation by Omar Carrera and Voces de Canal. So please mark your calendars. This concludes my comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
The next speaker is either Jane or John, followed by Deborah Benson. And, oops, you're unmuted now, Jane and John.
Thank you. This is, uh, good evening, council members and staff. John Romatis, resident of Fairfax. I'd like to just comment on the recording of meetings based on some issues recently. Uh, two issues from a recent public meeting. One, at the August 12th ResJ meeting, ResJ members were told that if they felt uncomfortable with public comments, they could quote, "depart." During public comments, some ResJ members turned off their video while certain members of the public were speaking. Two, at that meeting, a ResJ member flipped off a public speaker. That is, they made a gesture with their middle finger. Excuse me. Actions by ResJ members during that meeting, which would have been part of the public record, sadly or not. I assume this was due to a setting in Zoom called Active Speaker Mode, in which the live meeting shows all participants in a grid, but is recorded showing only the active speaker. Conversely, a gallery mode setting both records and shows participants in a grid layout. In an effort to stop abuse, exploitation, and the undermining of the public meeting process, I urged the town of Fairfax to create a written policy that will prevent such abuses by sitting committee members. Members on all committees should be required to maintain decorum and refrain from such acts as disruptive activism, eating, turning off video screens, rude gestures, and disagreeable body language while actively representing the town, especially while members of the public are speaking. And the second is all recorded video meetings should be broadcast and recorded in gallery mode or other equivalent settings so that the public can fully view committee members as in an in-person meeting. Remember, the public has a limited time to speak, whereas committee members have the advantage and privilege of the last word. That privilege should be respected. I would be happy to email these and other suggestions for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Jody Timms. Deborah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members for hearing me. Um, a couple of things. I was on the parcade, um, last week and, um, right across from Barefoot, that one of the new trees that was a replacement for one of the, uh, liquid embers that was taken out, looks like it's so sad. It, it, it looks like it, it could be dying. And I'm wondering what's going on with the irrigation of, of both the redwoods and the parcade trees. I had some water in my car, but it wouldn't have been enough. So that's, that's one thing. And then, on the consent calendar, um, the, the new, uh, the new rules that, um, about this teleconferencing says that the, the, the public, in public meetings, the public has to, uh, be given time, um, to speak and, uh,
Mayor, point of order.
As long as the, pardon?
I'm sorry, Mayor, point of order. Um, this is open time and that's an agendized item.
That's, that's true.
No, it was on the consent calendar.
Yeah, it's part of the agenda.
There'll be a public comment period for the consent calendar.
Oh, okay, then forget that. Just talk about the, just the water. I want the trees watered, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
The next speaker is Jody Timms, followed by Ava. And Jody, you're unmuted now.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor and council members. Jody Timms, Cascade Drive. Um, I, on behalf of age-friendly Fairfax, I just wanted to mention a few things. First of all, I really want to thank Larry Louder for, uh, stepping up many years ago to put the flags that we have at some of the intersections. Um, for those of us who, when we cross the street, want to be sure we're seen, they're available in the little white buckets for anyone to use. But I would like to really encourage Fairfax residents, please don't take them. Leave them there, they're for us to use and reuse again and again. And they often disappear. And Larry continues to step forward and pay for new sets of flags. So I just wanted to thank him publicly for that because it does make me feel safer when I cross those streets. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, we have our age-friendly Fairfax, our 90-plus celebration, our celebration for those 90 and older coming up in November. So we do want to be sure we have everybody in town who's over 90. We want to reach out to them and see if they want to have a basket delivered. So if you know such a person, please let us know. You can let, let Ann Manis know in town, uh, because we have just the voter rolls. So not everybody is on those to try to track folks down. I just quickly also want to mention in terms of events, uh, we do have a flyer and a newsletter, Age Friendly Fairfax. The Commission on Aging event is always listed there. Also, this month, Breakfast with Friends will be on October 20th. The library is, but, um, working with us on a iPhone training or they have set up an iPhone training. It will be by Zoom, October 25th and 26th. So if you're, need some help with your iPhone, that would be great to take. And the forum this month will be focusing on Medicare. Um, if you're just getting on Medicare or you've been on, there are over, I think, over 20 new plans for members of, um, the Marin community to consider. So if you're thinking you might, might want to change or just know more about Medicare options, the forum, Age Friendly Forum this month is October 27th. And just lastly, I want to switch for a quick moment and And just lastly, I want to switch for a quick moment and mention, with my Climate Action Committee hat on. As you may know, we're not doing well when it comes to climate change. We're currently on track to hit 3.2 centigrade globally. That's meeting everything under the Paris Agreement. So that's not good. We need to bump up things. And I just wanted to be sure folks knew there's a program. If you have an old car in the Bay Area that's older than 1997 or older, there is a Cash for Clunkers program, and there's information about that on our Fairfax Climate Action website, fairfaxclimate.org. And you can get up to $1,200 for that old car. There are some specifications you need to look into, but I just wanted to be sure people know. If you've got an old car, please try to get it off the road if you can, because those are big polluters. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jody. And I believe it's climatefx.org.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ava, or Eva, followed by Helen Faust. And Ava, you're unmuted now.
Thanks so much. I wanted to take a moment to recognize Joe McGarry's careful research and his diligent research into racial demographics in your town. I do kind of want to posit it against the land acknowledgement that you do at the beginning of this meeting, which I think is well-intended, but is not actually meaningful unless you're looking at what's happening today, and that's what Mr. McGarry is doing. And it's not an easy thing to do. There's a lot of pushback that people who look at these numbers and look at the arrest demographics get. And you should be proud of him and grateful to him for bringing these forward. And I do hope that you'll be making some space for him on a commission to review this data, because it is meaningful, and it is kind of ironic to start a meeting with land acknowledgements and not follow up with actual meaningful policy changes. I do want to say that I had the privilege of reviewing some BodyCam video from one of the Marin County municipal departments this week. That took about three hours, and it was illuminating. And I do want to just point out that, I won't mention which police department this was, but their willingness to be transparent was greatly appreciated by me. And of course, BodyCam video is all from the perspective of a police officer. So when your police officers are doing their job, it can only reflect well on them. And so I want to encourage people who have encounters with police, particularly in Fairfax, to really, to make use of your rights as a citizen and to make use of policies that are in place in the state of California, and ask to see the BodyCam video. I think competent and trustworthy police departments will make that available in a timely fashion. And it's all for the best in terms of seeing what officers go through in their jobs. And just to, you know, the BodyCam is there to make sure that people are following procedures. And it's a great tool. It's a great tool for police departments, but it's also a great tool for citizens. So it's there, and I hope Chief Tabaranza is going to make that available to the people of Fairfax in a timely fashion when they request it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Helen Faust, followed by Jane. Helen, you're unmuted now.
Helen, you might need to unmute yourself on your end. There we go.
Okay, sorry. Well, I'd like to express my concern that the council meetings aren't being held at the Women's Club, as they have been in the past, and open to the public. For example, churches are open or meeting in person with proper precautions. And even a couple of weeks ago, I attended a meeting at the Women's Club where the neighborhood, my neighborhood, was invited to meet with the representative of the Police Department to express our concerns. So that was in person. I was especially dismayed last week, or a couple of weeks ago, listening to the council meeting where a new housing plan was presented, seemingly almost an accomplished fact that would drastically change the whole nature of the town. And I believe that clearly such dramatic change needs the town's discussion, needs open meetings. I guess I'm concerned that it gives the appearance, an appearance of not wanting public comment on when there are items that concern the whole town. I guess that's my concern. I would at some point like to hear a response as to why the council isn't meeting in the town, the Women's Building. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jane, and you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I just wanted to support the first three speakers of John Romatis, Deborah Benson, and Helen Faust. I completely agree with everything they have to say. And I would also like to add that I feel like a lot of decisions or meetings are being unduly influenced by people who are not residents of Fairfax. And these matters that are coming up before you and before us are really primarily concerning those of us who live here. And if people, I'm not saying that someone from outside of our community is not welcome to speak, but somehow it doesn't seem quite fair, because it allows for people who have an agenda or a platform from someplace else to come in and try to influence the decisions that our town makes. So I don't know how we could deal with that or address it or try to make it a little more fair, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Jane.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. Oops. Sorry. Hang on. Someone got in before you, and I clicked on them. Okay, Mark, you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. A few points. Number one, going back to the land acknowledgement, that woman did have the point of it being absurd, and it is. I don't know if you've been following what's been happening with archaeological digs and anthropological studies, but they've carbon dated hominid footprints 23,000 years ago, which is well in advance of the Mewox showing up, as their legend says, several thousand years ago. And that's in North America, and it's been carbon dated ground above it, ground below the footprints, and they're fossilized. So what that means is that there is most likely a population living in this area. Anthropological studies say that really what happened, just to simplify, was there was a 100,000-year war between Neanderthals and Homo sapiens, where the Homo sapiens won. So basically, they were wiped out. So when you go into this thing, and really what you're saying is that, you know, we stole the land, which obviously isn't true, since it was a Spanish who did, from the Mewox, and that it's unceded. Well, they also were living on unceded land, and most likely, they murdered some type of, or genocided some type of Neanderthal who was pretty close to us to get the land. And they didn't write it down that they were giving them the land. So this land acknowledgement is absurd and needs to go. Secondly, the point that was brought up by John really is very descriptive of the behavior of two people on this council. As I've watched virtually all the PPP, PSA, and RESJ meetings, and I've documented many instances of racist comments from members of those meetings, and you don't seem to have a problem with that. You don't even take the time to go back and look to see if you missed something, to get a view on it, and to voice some type of displeasure or disgust. Never happened. So I really don't, when I look at this, I'm looking at a double standard. You seem to have an issue with people who have a different opinion of yours. Oh, those are harmful. Those are negative in a disparaging way, which is contrary to the behavioral rules that were set, but you ignore them yourselves. And even Bruce Ackerman and John Reed attacking Frank several months ago was totally absurd and out of line. So those are my, two of my points. Since I'm out of time, I have more, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. I believe I lowered someone's hand, a caller whose number ends in 102. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Okay, they are not raising their hand.
Okay.
Right. So that's if you want to close the public.
We'll then bring it back to council. Thank you. Okay, the couple of things that responding to Okay, I'm sorry, I'll skip it. We will be talking about our council meetings. It'll be on consent, but we can, that's coming up next, so we'll... Yeah. Okay, so we've got, I'll just, I'll skip any comments at this point, sorry. Okay, so on the consent calendar, we have items one through seven, but item number six has been moved to a later point in the agenda. It'll be after item nine, so we've got the consent calendar minus item six. We can, if there are any questions about the consent calendar that would help to clarify it for the public, and then we can take public comment on items on the consent. Barbara?
I just wanted to make two brief comments, not pull anything, and that is, I want to thank Ms. Parry Hansen for stepping up for another four-year term on Parks and Recreation. She served since 2009, I believe, and has been the chair for some time. I also want to extend my thanks to the Fairfax Open Space Committee and staff, as well as our attorney for working on the land donation. The process was really followed, something that we worked on years ago. And it's a wonderful donation to our town. And I just wanted to mention those two as thanks.
Councilmember Grotter?
Yeah, thank you for calling those out, Barbara. Wanted to echo the thanks to Cece. She's one of those great, joyful humans that we constantly are entertained by, if you will. Dancing and acting and just bringing joy. So thank you, Cece, if you're out there somewhere. But I wanted to, actually, not to pull anything, but number seven on consent. I was hoping that we could, especially in light of Helen Faust's comment, if Janet might be willing to give us a quick rundown on AB 361 and the continuation of virtual meetings. I think there are many members of the public that are interested in hearing this. So if that could happen in this context, that would be great without pulling it.
Sure, I'd be happy.
Thank you.
About that same item. I just wanted to confirm that AB 361 is optional, and we're, as the staff report says, we're allowed to meet in person. So I just wanted to figure out what, you know, if you could elaborate on that, Janet, as well, and give us a sense of what that process would look like to switch over. That'd be appreciated.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Do you want me to do that now, or would you like to wait till a different time?
I think if we did it now, it would help to clarify things for all of us before we take public comment.
Okay, sure. It's, AB 361 allows us to continue to meet virtually, over Zoom or however. It has two new requirements, replaces the executive order the governor signed at the beginning of the pandemic. It adds two new things to it, and we are already in conformance with the things that it adds. So it's not really an issue for us, but it requires that you allow the public to speak at the time of any item on the agenda. Some places were initially saying you had to submit a written public comment. You had to do it before the meeting started, and they kept to that. We did not, and we are going, you know, with comments at the time. So anybody can call in and participate, have a public comment at the time of an item. And so we're in full performance with that. It is something, legislation that sunsets on January 1st of 2024. It is an optional thing. You don't have to do it, but it is recommended if you're at all concerned about inability to social distance in a meeting location, for example. You can have mask requirements, but the social distancing aspect is really what it's intended to address. So if you have a small meeting location, if it's usually very crowded, if it's not possible to socially distance members of the public, it's an option to remain safe during the time of the pandemic. The declaration of emergency is still in effect from the governor. And as far as the pandemic is concerned, that's why we would be using it for that particular reason. It's also, though, designed that if you had localized emergencies, for example wildfires, and you got a governor's declaration of local emergency, you could also use it. I note that the community in stuff like Tahoe was evacuated recently. And so this would be available to use in that type of emergency. So it's not just solely pandemic-related, but in our particular case, it is. And so it is up to the council how you want to use this and whether you think that you can hold a meeting safely or not.
Thank you. And that...
Add a major additional?
Just, yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to add one more piece, is that it is our intentions, just like most of the towns and cities here in the county, to come back to in-person meetings, potentially as early as our next meeting, but most likely by our November 3rd meeting, and have a hybrid model, so those that would like to continue to participate via Zoom could still participate via Zoom. Obviously, the council can agendize how you would like to have these meetings resume here in the near future, but that is, that's pretty much the trend and the plans of our neighboring communities. And this model gives us the ability to do both, assuming that the health and safety of all participants is taken as our number one priority. Hope that helps.
Just the one piece. Oh, sorry, Chance. Go ahead. I just wanted to make, help, ask you to help clarify about the piece where council needs to make a determination every 30 days in order to decide about the coming month.
That is true. That is a requirement, that any findings you make concerning the situation be reauthorized every 30 days. And that's why we envisioned a continuing consent item on every regular meeting consent calendar. But that is up to the council, so that is something you would need to give us direction on.
Okay, thanks.
If I could clarify on that front. So if I could clarify on that front, um, Adam, uh, is it the, the implementation of the hybrid model, um, that would be ready to go by November? Should something come back to us in two weeks um on consent or something like that? Or come to us for a discussion about whether or not we move back to in-person? Um, and then the public would be like notified? I'm just trying to figure out like, how is the public going to be made aware that we're going to be making this switch? And if, if folks want to come in person too?
Uh, yeah, so I'll start with the, the second part, because that's the easier one. It'll be posted on the agenda, so anyone looking at the agenda will know that we are uh hosting in-person meetings. Uh, and they will also be given the option to continue uh to log in via Zoom. Um, the, the uh, the first part of the question, I think, is, is really related to um, uh, the good work that your town clerk has been doing, working with CMCN, who um provides the service to record and, and broadcast our meetings and coordinating this dual uh capability and working with our public works director to make sure that all the equipment that's necessary is, is in fact uh available um a- as soon as, as later this month. So um, Michelle has been working very hard to make sure that we are uh able to go back to in-person meetings. Um, in, in our opinion, no later than the November third meeting.
And councilmember Kohler.
Just one question for our interim town manager. Um, I'd also like to say, even though Zoom is awkward, it is an open meeting. And we've been doing this because of the pandemic, not because we choose to. And I'd just like to ask Adam, um, I, I thought also we had some concerns about social distancing in a relatively small room, because um we are very fortunate, we get a lot of people coming to our meetings. So is that something we're going to consider um as we move forward? Or how do we address that, or will we have some measures in place?
And just pointing out, we have thirty-three people signed on to this Zoom call, so we're talking about a room full of people. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think to the mayor's point there that, you know, we, we, and, and as, as a council member just shared, um, our intention is for public participation, so we would like to have a full room. But absolutely, those safety precautions have to be number one. And when we were talking about the housing elements at our last meeting, that is a good example of where we know we will have a full room and it would be impossible for us to have uh the space requirements to keep everyone safe. So the council and staff will have to work together to really evaluate the agenda and the space that we're utilizing to have these meetings. And, and obviously, my first priority is keeping the public, our council and our staff uh safe and healthy. So, you know, again, the county health official is working with us to guide us on these decisions. And we don't want to be in a situation where we tell people, we're sold out, you can't come join us at the meeting. Uh, we, we'd much rather have people participate from the comfort of their own home, their office, you know, or wherever they have internet access and participate as you all are doing right now in, in, in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else to clarify or question on consent, we'll open it to public comment on items on the consent calendar, not including item six, which has been moved to later in the agenda. So Michelle, if you would open the public comment, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time I see one hand, that is Deborah Benson, and I have unmuted you, Deborah.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, councilmembers for hearing me. Um, I have a question based upon what Adam just uh said, well, two things. We can have a Fairfax Town picnic, why can we not have an in-person meeting? And I'm wondering of the thirty-three attendees tonight, how many of them might not be residents of Fairfax? Who would, if we were in-person meeting, uh, not be attending? And I'm wondering if there's some way to kind of filter uh attendees to figure that one out. Um, then, uh, as you all told me when I was speaking before, out of order, um, the consent calendar is on the agenda. So in this AB three sixty-one language, um, it states that um the uh governments must leave open the opportunity for public comment until the comment period for a given item is closed during the ordinary course of the meeting. The opportunity to make public comment must be of a sufficient duration so as to allow actual public participation. So that brings to my mind the question as of whether allowing thirty minutes for public comment only and then sending the rest to the end of the meeting follows that rule. So that's my question, because if it's on the agenda and um it's being, it's being discussed, it's, it's in progress, or does that really work? And in some of these last few meetings, this thirty-minute thing has worked. But in uh other meetings where there are really hot topics, pushing public comment on items not on the agenda uh to the end would really restrict our ability to speak. So I have a question about that, thank you for hearing me, that's all.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael McIntosh, and I have unmuted you, Michael.
Thank you, councilmember. I would like the first item on the agenda to be, or excuse me, on the consent calendar to be pulled off or at least have a discussion. And openly, I'd like to hear from Michael Vervet, our finance manager, director, how much money is collected every month from PG&E from the UUT tax. Specifically, the town of Fairfax has stolen from me in excess of seven thousand dollars over the last five and a half years. So before this gets to litigation, I would like explanations from the town on their collection practices from me and everybody else. The town is in place right now with a FOIA. The FOIA will be returned to the town, and the town will need to present that to me. So it's certified as correct, not from your attorneys, so you can try to not give all the information. So if you could please do that and discuss specifically the UUT, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if there are any more public comments, please raise your hand. I do not see any more, if you'd like to close the public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will close the public comment on items on the consent. And just on the, on the comment uh that Deborah Benson made, I'm not sure I understand. You can bring it up with staff if you would like, but the, we're, what the thirty-minute limit was referring to in the early part of the meeting was the open time for expression on items not on the agenda. So continuing that to the end of the meeting wouldn't affect the ability for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda by definition. They, each one of them, like we just did, uh, on the consent items, has its own time for public comment at the time that we consider it. Okay, so if there's any uh discussion on any items on the agenda, or if not, a motion would be, be made to?
Could I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item six, please?
Happy to second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second Cutrano, and Michelle, if you would take a roll call on the consent.
Yes, councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, consent calendar passes. Item eight is continued until the next meeting or, or whenever the, uh, whenever it's ready to go. So the regular agenda now begins with item nine. And if we can get a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council, town staff and residents of Fairfax. My name, um, can you all hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Perfect. My name is Lorena Barrera. I'm an administrative analyst helping the town um through shared services with the town of Corte Madera. And I'm going to be going over the proposed racial equity and social justice programs and initiatives for town council's consideration and direction. Um, but before I do that, I wanted to just briefly um read to you all a little bio about myself. Um, I was born and raised in Vallejo, California, and I'm currently a resident of Sonoma County. I attended UC Merced where I received a bachelor's degree in political science. And then following that, um, I moved to Sonoma County to attend Sonoma State um to acquire a master's in public administration. While in school, um, I served as a volunteer on various internships in various levels of government. And during that time, I became aware of the disconnect between people and their representatives. Um, I then began working as a representative for a member of Congress uh where I was exposed to policy analysis and became more aware of the loopholes that exist in policy and affect the public. The exposure to policy and the realization of public disconnect led me to my interest in management in the public sector and um also to volunteerism around policy change and program implementation. I'm a big believer in serving our community and um I currently serve the residents of the county of Sonoma. I'm on the Commission on the Status of Women for Sonoma County, where we research issues that affect women and girls um within the county of Sonoma. And I'm also uh the vice chair for the Community Advisory Council for the Independent Office of Law Enforcement Review and Outreach, where we make policy recommendations for the Sheriff's Department in um the county of Sonoma based on issues happening in the community and then also um audits that are conducted by the department, um, which is also known as IOLERO um for short. Um, right now I work as an administrative analyst for the town of Corte Madera. And as a minority in society, setting an example in the community is of great importance to me. And I believe in informing and educating people in order to strengthen communities and that assisting in the resolution of issues that affect everyone is a great way to do that. So I was very excited to um work on this project to come up with these proposals. And I'm going to go ahead and um give my presentation to you all. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so uh in May twenty twenty, the world was struck by the shocking video of George Floyd being pinned to the ground by the knee of a white police officer. This incident triggered anger in people of all ages and backgrounds and led to protests all over the country. Americans have been more outspoken and pushing for action against racism and for equality. Governments all over the country have taken different approaches to addressing these matters. And in Fairfax, uh, the town council took action by forming a committee to examining issues of racial equity, social justice, systemic racial bias and diversity in Fairfax, thereby establishing the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee, otherwise known as RESJ. RESJ was formed in July twenty twenty. They held um thirteen meetings over a period of thirteen months in accordance with the Brown Act. It was composed of eleven members of the community, two council members, and up to two ex-officio youth members. Um, they were assigned to focus on uh actively dismantling and um eradicating systemic and individual racism, bigotry and discrimination within the town of Fairfax in an effort to create a Fairfax that is explicitly anti-racist, equitable and inclusive in both word and deed. Um, the RESJ uh members basically had to follow the limitations set by the Brown Act, and there are various factors that contributed to a lot of frustration that led to several committee members resigning from the RESJ. Um, and the last public meeting was held August fifth, twenty twenty one. The resignation said a lot about the difficult work RESJ was to discuss and address. And um, aside from that, did open the door to an opportunity for town council to consider a new uh direction for Fairfax. So on the path to a new direction, we're bringing forward menu items um that you should, that are recommendations that we're suggesting um after researching programs and policies all over the state and country. Um, each item has been placed under a category, and there are five categories. And, but each item should be considered individually, and this isn't meant to be an exhaustive list. Um, we, we want um you to consider items where progress and success can be measured. And uh, we would like for everyone to be open to trying something new because um that might help bring the community together. So the five categories are listed here. Overview and Development of Town Policies, Plans, Surveys and Training. Community Collaboration and Town Partnerships. Economic Development, Communication and Understanding, and Public Safety and Police Practices. So on the first cat- category, um we all know that town employees are public servants who work for the public good. In order for staff to effectively address issues uh the Fairfax community is challenged with, the town should develop policies, procedures and plans that would help the town of Fairfax become an organization that is responsive and considerate of all of its residents. So one of the items under this category is the creation of a racial equity action plan. This type of plan would assist the local municipality in examining its own policies and practices to determine what should be addressed in order to develop institutional change. In order to properly develop this type of plan, town council can consider analyzing existing town policies or creating new policies um that are necessary for the town around areas like hiring practices, employee retention, employee promotion and um contracting and town partnerships with community organizations. Council can also consider becoming a member of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, uh, which is a national network of governments working to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all. And I believe that was something that the RESJ was also looking into. Um, the second item is creating a handbook for recruiting, hiring and retaining employees. Um, the town of Fairfax can consider working on developing this type of handbook that would be used for recruiting, hiring um and retention. And it can include steps and points and even sometimes um examples of interview questions for human resources departments, hiring managers and staff members to consider to help achieve racial equity. Uh, many jurisdictions have this type of handbook, and it can also include information related to the town's equal employment opportunity policy and plan. And at this time, the town of Fairfax doesn't have um such a document. Um, the third item is the update to the general plan. At the last RESJ uh meeting, the discussion was held regarding the proposal to make text amendments to the general plan. This was a proposal that was brought by Shelley Hamilton of Hamilton Consulting. And um, she proposed that the general plan text edits replace vague and ambiguous instances of the terms community character and neighborhood character with Fairfax descriptions that are appropriate and descriptive and also provide clarification to the implementation of the general plan. Um, Hamilton states that these amendments would move away from perpetuating the use of systemically racist terms that were used in the nineteen hundreds. This proposal uh makes no material changes to the general plan and can, should be considered by council as something to um discuss. Um, another item is a community survey for the town of Fairfax. A community survey is a great way to solicit input from residents in Fairfax. And the survey can include questions related to the various departments and questions specific to the police department, um, which is something that the Police Practices and Public Safety Alternative Subcommittee was working on. Um, council can also take advantage of the creation of such a survey and, and ask other important questions that you might want to hear residents um residences' opinions on. Um, it's important to have a survey that is more scientific and that contains questions that are written in a way that are balanced and not persuasive. So um council should consider a consulting. council should consider a consulting firm that specializes in this type of work. The last item under this category is a diversity and inclusion training program. And these types of programs are intended to help employees, council members like yourselves, board members, commissioners, and committee members to understand and respect various differences among themselves. And a program like this would offer learning opportunities around topics like unconscious bias and cross-cultural communication and should be conducted every two years, similar to ethics trainings and other trainings that are mandatory by the state of California. Diversity and Inclusion Training Programs should be related to the mission, values, and goals of Fairfax. And currently, the town of Fairfax doesn't have this type of program. Under the Community Collaboration and Town Partnerships category, local community organizations can develop partnerships with other organizations and the town of Fairfax can take advantage of this by partnering with these organizations as well to create put together events like job fairs. A job fair is something that students mostly have access to and not that non-students don't, but career fairs and things like that are normally directed towards the student population. However, career and job fairs are relevant and important for all people who are seeking employment or looking for change in their current job. A job fair can help with exploring job options, networking, and sometimes even with seminars and lectures that help people get a better understanding of how to acquire a job today. Council can consider partnering with the College of Marin and maybe the town of San Anselmo or the town of Ross to put a job fair where everyone in the area can attend. I know that on the county level, something like this is already in place, but maybe having something more local will attract more of the residents of Fairfax. Pop-up events are also something that could be considered and these are temporary events that can be held in open public spaces and even unused retail space. These events can be a great way to expose Fairfax residents to new types of businesses and more importantly, to diversity.
Advance your slides, please.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we are here. Where was I? Council can consider partnering with local organizations around the area to put together a pop-up event that is inviting a minority-owned businesses and entrepreneurs and such an event can be a culinary event that also partners with town restaurants and caterers. Similar to places where this type of food event has been a success, the town can even call the event Taste of Fairfax. And council can consider having a small stage for entertainment and options for different types of music. From speaking with Mayor Ackerman and reading about Fairfax, I learned that Fairfax has a reputation for appreciating musical artists and maybe that's something that can be incorporated in such an event. Partnering with local, with the local library is another idea. The library in Fairfax is one of several branches of the, that are part of the Marin County Free Library and the Marin County Free Library works with local school districts and community partners to design inclusive multilingual programs that are intended to help children who are challenged by barriers in early childhood education. They work on literacy development and high school graduation on the basis of race and income. Some of the programs they already have put together include a speaker series called Building Bridges Beyond Bias. They have queer teen support groups, conversation club, both in English and in Spanish, and town council can consider assisting the library and promoting these types of events or even helping to organize events and bringing ideas to the library to put together that will attract the Fairfax community. On the third category, we have economic development. Town businesses operate within the economy and a healthy economy requires growth and sustainability. In today's world, the face of the workforce has evolved and business owners need to make changes that embrace equity, opportunity, and inclusion and council can assist with that by using some of the funds that are going to be received from the American Rescue Plan Act, which is, which was passed by the federal government to help with public health and economic recovery from COVID-19. The town council can consider addressing negative economic impacts in Fairfax, including economic harms to workers and small businesses by creating a loan program to assist these small businesses. Council can also designate a percentage of the funds that will be received or a specific amount from those funds to be used specifically for minority-owned businesses. And another thing, council can consider designating funds for businesses that were forced to provide an outdoor service area or are currently in the process of creating a permanent outdoor operations area. And another item under that category is to work with the Small Business Development Center of Marin, which is an organization that supports businesses with tools and insights around growth and improvement. They offer trainings and webinars for businesses to participate in and the town could consider sponsoring, sorry, entrepreneurship events and use basically the Small Business Development Center, which already provides lots of information for businesses to stay on top of changes in law and employee rights to just inform owners of businesses in Fairfax about what is out there for them to, you know, make sure that they're staying on top of everything and staying afloat. The next category is communication and understanding. And I think this is one of the most important because communication is key. I mean, we all hear that and it's key to developing and strengthening relationships with the residents of Fairfax. We must recognize that people use different resources to communicate and when it comes to local issues, most people are unaware of the actions being taken by council unless residents are active participants in the community or there are people who have a specific concern on something that impacts them directly or people who are angry about something happening in their town. We need to keep that in mind and understand that we can help local agencies develop a plan to broaden participation for all residents in order to conduct better decision-making in the community. So as part of that, the town council can consider contracting a communications consultant who would work with the town's communications staff to enhance the use of social media, learn techniques using plain language that will allow more residents the opportunity to understand projects and the work conducted in town. Town council can also team up with community-based organizations because it can help extend outreach, improve cultural competency, and reduce public mistrust. Council can consider developing a recommended procedure that staff would use to work towards including the entire community. So you can use community-based organization as part of the outreach methods and including diverse stakeholders when communicating with the public. And then the last item under this category is two-way communication, creating a safe space. Freedom of speech is a First Amendment of our Bill of Rights and within that right, it sometimes becomes difficult to listen to opposing opinions and that can sometimes silence individuals who fear their opinions will not be heard in a peaceful manner. In order to begin the creation of what people are calling a safe space, council should consider adopting a Commitment to Civil Engagement Declaration that states that any community meetings held with the assistance of the town will require a respectful environment where disagreements are heard and supported. This would be separate from the language in the meeting protocol listed on the agendas for Fairfax Legislative and Advisory Bodies. During these meetings, individuals participating in the meetings should be reminded to listen with an open mind to all information because dissenting points of view are what provide learning opportunities for everyone. It's important to see safe space discussions as educational discussions where opinions and points of view are very likely to be challenged by others and this challenge that is conducted is part of the process of understanding an issue in order to make proper change. The last category is around public safety and police practices and this one was a little difficult because a lot of the things that we'd consider recommending are already being done by the police. So we did come up with some ideas. So we have the Police Chief Annual Statistics Report to Council. It's important for council to be aware of the different types of calls for service that the Fairfax Police Department has to address. Like most people, there is a general idea of crimes that a police officer normally responds to. However, the types of crimes vary and understanding patterns of crimes and the duties of the Fairfax Police Department can help the council residents and the police department itself determine trends and issues that need to be addressed. Council can drive change by requesting an annual presentation from the police chief on statistics related to Fairfax. This type of action contributes to the efforts of educating the entire community and being transparent. And at that same time, the police chief can also take the opportunity to provide a general statistical overview of the information that is being tracked per the requirements set by the Racial and Identity Profiling Act of 2015, which Police Chief Tabaranza will be presenting on. Another item on this category is community outreach. So at this time, the police department does a good job in including information in the town's newsletter, attending community events when possible. You probably haven't seen them around that much because COVID has not made that possible for literally anyone. And but I did learn that Coffee with the Cop event used to be held and then it wasn't held for some time, but bringing that back would be a good idea and holding that type of event at a local business is something that the police department can consider. Then regarding training and course requirements for the Fairfax Police Department, they're already conducting trainings based on the requirements set by post. And the last item is regarding the Mobile Crisis Response Team service effort. So the Mobile Crisis Response Team is a team staffed by a licensed mental health clinician and one peer provider. And they respond to mental, mental health and substance abuse crises and psychiatric emergencies in the community throughout Marin County. So it's just recommended that that collaboration continue as much as possible and make every effort to bring the Mobile Crisis Response Team to address issues in Fairfax. And now I'm going to turn it over to Police Chief Tabaranza and I'll be changing the slides for him.
Thank you, Ms. Lorraine Barrera. I appreciate your great work and efforts tonight and thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak regarding police-related items within your report. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Rico Tabaranza, Fairfax Police Chief. And I will step in here momentarily to discuss with you the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, California Assembly Bill 953 of 2015. And I will kindly ask Ms. Barrera to assist me with the slides here. So there, you're on the right one. My hope today is to provide information on our department's progress with these RIPA legal requirements. And I will also introduce an additional resource for our community today as another step forward in our efforts to show further transparency and accountability regarding the efforts of your local Fairfax Police Department. So slide one, and she has it up there. The Racial and Identity Profiling Act of 2015 is California Assembly Bill 953. And this, this requires state and local law enforcement agencies to collect data regarding stops of individuals, including perceived demographic information on the person stopped and to report this data to the California Department of Justice DOJ on an annual basis. The RIPA was designed to increase transparency and accountability around law enforcement. You can go to slide two, please, Lorraine. Okay, so when is Fairfax Police Department required to collect data? We are required to collect data in January of 2022. The, the data collected is mandated by the California Department of Justice and it is required to be submitted no later than April of 2023. To collect in January 2022, report and send it to DOJ by April 2023. DOJ will then post this data on their website sometime after April of 2023. So data collection will be ongoing with submission to DOJ required no later than April of each year for the prior year's data. So go ahead, slide three, please. So where is the Fairfax Police Department in their progress to meet the requirements of this mandate? The Fairfax Police Department has been in test mode since July of 2021, six months prior to the mandate. Slide four, please. What data are Fairfax Police Officers required to report for each stop, detention, or search of an individual? I'll go down the list here briefly, but I want to mention that all fields and selection options are designated by DOJ. This is something we didn't get to choose and pick from. These are also like, these are all designated by Department of Justice. So we have agency identification number. That's our agency number that DOJ recognizes. The date, time, and duration of the stop, the location of the stop, perceived race or ethnicity of person stopped, perceived gender of person stopped, person stopped perceived to be LGBT, perceived age of person stopped, perception that person stopped has limited or no English fluency, perceived or known disability of person stopped, reason for the stop, stop made in response to a call for service, actions taken by officer during stop. These again are pre-designated selections defined by DOJ. If none of the, the dropdowns that are available for us exist, none is answered required by DOJ. The next one is results of stop, officer's identification number, officer's years of experience, the type of assignment of the officer, and once again, everything is pre-designated by DOJ. Next slide, please. When is the public able to access the Fairfax Police Department's data from the Department of Justice? The public would not be able to see our collected data until the Department of Justice posts it sometime after April of the following year of that collected data. So an example of this is, let's say we start collecting in January of 2022. That data, once that year is over, won't be available until April of 2023. So, let's see, next slide, please. So with that in mind, by, by collecting stop data here, oh, where am I? Oh, the slides are down. Okay, by collecting stop data, we at the Fairfax Police Department have been able to, to be more transparent with our community in regards to who we may contact with and why. One way we can use this data is to determine the number of stops our officers have made. With it, we can better understand what each stop was for, if it led to a citation, a search, arrest, or not. We can also use this data to better understand if our officers' stops are in line with our department policies and our overall mission and goals. So in order to share this information with the community as soon as possible, although not mandated by the state, several local agencies have been looking for ways to display this data ahead of time and in a consistent manner. So I felt like the Fairfax Police Department should have a user-friendly way to provide this data on our department website. So with the help of a retired Marin County Sheriff's Lieutenant who created a dashboard platform for us, our Fairfax PD staff was able to manually enter our own data within this created dashboard platform, allowing us to display information for our community and anyone else who chooses to view our information from our department website. So I will now share my screen and begin a tutorial for you tonight. This way you can learn and see where this RIPA dashboard is on our website and how easy it is to review and interpret the data. So I will share my screen. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
All right. So this is our Fairfax Police Department website. This is the homepage. If you scroll down, here on the left, you'll see Transparency, Statistics, and Press Log. If you press that, you'll get to this page. Now here on the left, you'll see Racial and Identity Profiling Act, RIPA, right here. There's also a button right here. So you can select either or. So I'll, I'll choose it. So you can select either or, so I'll, I'll choose it and you'll get to this page. This pretty much breaks down exactly what I just presented to you. And it also provides links to, for example, AB 953. And it provides information about the DOJ information, report, reportable data right there. And this box right here, once clicked, brings you to this RIPA dashboard. So let me put this here. All right, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to run you real quick through this dashboard that is now live. This data was made live this morning and anybody can go on our website and get this. So it's important to show that the stop data right here on the top portion is available from a certain date span. So July 1st, 2021 through 9/18/2021, there's a total number of stops here. This pie chart uh, is color-coded to reflect the, the types of perceived race that have been listed here on the right. So for example, we have here white, and then you have, you have the other colors in the pie chart here that reflect the percentages of all those that have been stopped, searched, based on race. If you go to the right here, this shows the number of stops and also the gender, perceived gender of those that were stopped. So for example, if you hover over it right here, you'll see 474 were male, 225 were female, again, within this date span. And because it's so small here, the uh, you'll see a number, but it won't, sometimes, you know, it, it won't show based on how small the chart is for, for that. And let me move my zoom stuff out of the way. Down here is a number of stops and the reason for the stop. Again, if you hover over it, you'll see here, there's traffic violations are 584, reasonable suspicion was 113, and then it gets smaller here, but you can see, i- it shows you what it is there in the bottom of the number of stops and the reason for the stop. And what I want to show you here, uh, up top on the top right is a ability to, let me move my zoom stuff out of the way here. The ability to filter uh, by date, filter by reason for the stop, filter by result of the stop, perceived race and uh, filter by perceived gender. So let's just, for example, come over here to filter by perceived race. You can see this total of uh, stops, 701, from 7/1/2021 through 9/18/2021 shows all those that were selected here. It equals that amount. So if you, if you look at it and let's say you go, okay, um, I want to keep that, but I want to know uh, how many of those have been arrested? You can also filter that from going on the result of stop. And I'll give you one example here, we'll go to custodial arrest. So if I do that, 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 and that, it shows that out of, from July 1st, 2021 through 9/18/2021, th- these are our total custodial arrests. Uh, and again, by percentages of race right here. And if it doesn't show up, that means that person wasn't identified as somebody that was arrested around that time. Uh, number of stops by gender and down here again, the reason for the stop. If you want to add something to what's filtered, for example, citations for infractions, warnings, citations with warnings, then it kind of changes a little bit and it'll show you the breakdown then. And again, this including citations now, you can filter over the, the colors and you can see uh, where these races break down on the pie chart. And if they don't show up here, then it's most likely that uh, they weren't perceived to be that race based on this date span, they weren't arrested and they weren't cited or given a warning. So for example, let's go here, out of a total of 629, we have 76.6% white, Hispanic is 11.9, Black and African American, 4% at 25 and so on. So here's something where you can filter. If you go back and you want to reset everything, just go back to the main page here and hit reset and it brings you back to the data that was originally inputted without any of the filters. So that is that, um, what else can I say here? Uh, our intention is to update this dashboard quarterly, every January, April, June and September of every year. Uh, the reason why it's, it's so hard and, and can't do it daily is there's so much backend work to deal with this. So the officers, when they deal with a certain stop, arrest or a search, they have to input that information into our, our CAT system, which is our records retention system and our dispatch system. That then has to be vetted, confirmed, checked, made sure that it passes all the requirements of DOJ. We then send it to DOJ on a test mode and make sure that they don't kick it back and it's acceptable. And the ones that, once we get that, then we're able to put that information here. So there's going to be a delay based on the, all that information that has to be vetted, checked, double-checked and cross-checked to make sure that it meets all DOJ requirements. So again, this is another way for us to show our information way ahead of time. And it, it's an interactive process that allows for the community to be able to see uh, stop data information um, in addition to the requirements of RIPA. So this is our RIPA dashboard and now it is available on our town website. Okay, Lorena, I'm throwing it back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you just stop sharing your screen and then I'll-
I'm gonna get there, sorry.
That's okay.
I lost it.
Bottom of this.
Yeah, I know where it went. Sorry.
Top of the screen.
Yeah, I moved it earlier, so I kind of lost it, let me see. There it is.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I will proceed by going over the last slide. Um, now. So the next steps that we're asking for counsel and staff is for counsel to take considerate, consideration of each item individually, provide town staff with feedback on all proposed items, provide consensus on allowing staff to move forward with the implementation of items that don't require council approval, direct staff to report back on specific items that require council action prior to their implementation, and reaffirm a council working group with um, Mayor Ackerman and Councilmember Cutrano to be a part of that group. And for town staff um, to proceed per council's direction and the acquired feedback and return with a progress update over a period of six months. And we'd like to thank you, thank you Chief Tabaranza for showing us uh, that dashboard and how it's going to help the community um, read information and the data collected. And we'd like to leave you with this quote. "In every community, there is work to be done. In every nation, there are wounds to heal. In every heart, there is a power to do it," by Marianne Williamson. And I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen and turn it over to counsel. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That is a lot of good information and thank you, Lorena, for your a great deal of work that I know you've been doing on this and you, you've uh, covered a lot of ground and, and also just to point out that a lot of this, uh, these ideas have come from discussions with former RESJ members, people who are now in the Ross Valley Unite and, and with other groups. So there's a lot that's being brought here together tonight to, to carry this, carry this work forward and this won't be the end. It's not the beginning and it's not the end, but this is a great step, thank you. So we will go to public comment, but first if we have any questions, there's a lot of information. So certainly there might be questions, but if we can just stay to things that will help clarify it for the public and for ourselves before we go to public comment. Chance?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a, a quick clarification as far as the purpose of tonight. Um, we, it, when we get to our, our comments after public comment, which is, you know, the, one of the recommendations is to consider each of the proposed items individually. And I didn't know if um, we're gonna, you know, go, we're expected to go through each of those following the public comment. Um, and then the second thing was a question, Mayor. I, I was wondering if you want us to ask questions now of Rico regarding the RIPA data stuff as well? Um, or if we should focus strictly on the, the proposals um, that were laid out? Uh, and then the third thing is a question, uh, Lorena, amazing job, that was absolutely incredible. Um, and uh, really appreciate it. I was wondering if you could clarify for me, uh, from your research uh, regarding racial equity action plans, are those things that are done typically um, internally? Are there task forces established with members of the public? Or is this something that like typically they would hire like a, a justice equity, diversity and inclusion, like a Jedi consultant that comes in and does this work and, and is contracted and does community engagement to create such a plan that could potentially address some of these other things too?
There were variations on that, but um, the most common way to do it is to have like a task force that does involve a few members of the community. Um, I didn't find any examples where they were large groups, so um, it could, I, I'd say that maybe following in that type of path would be a good idea.
Thanks.
Renee, did you have your question? No, Stephanie?
Well, I'm not su-, I had similar questions to Councilmember Cutrano. I'm, I'm just by way of process, it would be helpful to know how we're going to do this. Are we just going to go sequentially and get input? Um, and or consensus on each one? So I had that same question and I had the same question about um, the RIPA. Do we comment, do we ask questions of our police chief now or?
Um, I would say that with regard to process, one thing that we could do would be to at least begin the discussion after public comment with uh, council members having heard the public, considering whether there are any items on the list that we really don't think should move forward. That would be a, a first thing. And things that we think should move forward immediately that, that really come to the top of the priority and then uh, go through and maybe not with, we certainly don't have time to go around all, all of us on the council to talk about each item. That would take, just the mechanics of doing that would take the rest of the night. So um, it'll have to be sort of a more general process, but I would start with those two just to sort of narrow it down. And I believe that staff has suggested that we uh, that we kind of divide it in our own minds into things that would not require council approval or things that would. But really what we're trying to do tonight is to give direction to staff for what would come back to council or what we get moving and uh, and our priorities on them.
Okay, um, sorry, I'm almost done. So there are, and the, in the headers or the titles of each opportunity, some of them say in parentheses, polit-, possible collaboration opportunity. So the ones that do not have that, does that mean town staff will handle those?
That was my intent, that that could be something that would be done internally. And if I may add, um, Attachment A is a reference of menu items um, that maybe will help uh, when going over the discussion and providing direction to staff. And then that could be used maybe to go one by one after an overall discussion on all items, if that's something that you'd like to do. But um, uh, actually, this was Adam's idea to make it a little bit easier to go over all of the proposed um, items.
Yeah, that, that sounds good. And thank you, this was an extraordinary staff report, so robust and thorough and I'm really grateful for your efforts. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll go to public comment on this.
Mayor, could I ask one more question?
Yes, Chance, go ahead.
Um, I just had one more question, Lorena, uh, regarding the like diversity and inclusion um, tru-, internal training, uh, that was for, you mentioned it during the presentation. I think it was a little more fleshed out maybe in the staff report, I'm not sure, but um, that's for uh, town committees as well as internal staff, correct? Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll go to public comment now. Uh, Michelle, if you would open that up, please.
Yes, if anybody would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand now. Um, and the first speaker is Michael McIntosh, followed by Veronica Garretts. Michael, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, council members. A couple of points. The first one is, um, I commend Chief Tabaranza for providing this information. And I certainly hope the council is aware how much additional staff time this takes and will include and increase his budget so he can continue to implement this. Two, I wish the town council would be so transparent as the police department is and provide the same information and not shut us down and have public meetings. I specifically asked for you to pull the first item on consent calendar with a very specific request to identify to the public the amount of UT, UUT tax collected and by the town and distribution. And you ignored that comment. So I wish you could take the same example that the police department does and act as transparent because you're failing. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Michael.
The next speaker is Veronica Garretts and you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. Hi, Council. Um, I first wanted to definitely point out how grateful I am that Councilmember Goddard and Vice Mayor Hellman, that you have your pronouns in your title and your name. Thank you for modeling that. And I want to let you know that I think I have so much respect for all of you and appreciate what you're doing and continue to do for our town and for the patience and grace that you hold in that work. And Lorena, I am so blown away by the um, depth and vastness of this staff report and just feel like, gosh, it would be nice if we could have you around for longer. Um, so thank you so much for all of the effort and time that you've put into it. And it really does feel like it touches on so many of the pieces that we um, over the year of being, how, around a year of being on RESJ of what emerged as ways, uh, options to move forward towards racial equity for our town. So it just, it, it's an incredible report and really grateful for your time and care on it, Adams as well. And also am so grateful Chief Tabaranza for the dashboard, it's huge. I'm really blown away by that as well. Um, and there were just a couple of things on there that I was curious about to, to just plant in the idea garden. Uh, in a working group that I get to, I'm fortunate to be a part of with the district attorney um, here in Marin County. They're trying to implement a similar dashboard or improve the dashboard that's represented. And one of the things that we've acknowledged in that community group that would be helpful to have is to distinguish not just the percent of um, as the racial breakdown pie chart demonstrated, not just to show the percentage of stops that were white folks or um, people of different uh, racial identities, perceived racial identities, but to also include the way that that relates to the percentage of that racial dem-, um, demographic within that community. I hope that that makes sense, um, dip, just the dip, I see some heads shaking, so that's helpful. Um, and then secondly, wanted to, um, no, I don't have anything else to say about that dashboard. I'm just so grateful for it. Thank you for getting that out there as early as you have. And in terms of the recommendation on the- And in terms of the recommendation on the RESJ report, I would urge us to really consider, based on that phenomenal survey we did around police practices, or the town survey that was done where there was some questions about police practices, that we hire a mental health professional ourselves because the mobile crisis unit is so overworked and they can't respond to the majority of calls that they're being asked to respond to. I noticed my time is up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Veronica.
The next speaker is Jane or John, followed by Deborah Benson. And Jane or John, you're unmuted now.
Hi, it's John, resident of Fairfax. Thank you, council members and staff. I just have a couple of comments. This is a long read. It seems to be, I mean, for lack of a word, kind of a manifesto of what a small vocal minority wants. I would highly recommend taking a closer read at this if you haven't already. There's, there's a lot of assumptions. And I'd just like to point out on the recommendation, number three at the beginning, it says, provide consensus on allowing staff to move forward with the implementations of items that do not require council approval. That's kind of a broad statement. I'd like to, it'd be nice to know exactly what those are before they're implemented. Another thing I noticed, I mean, again, I'm going on the assumptions. I'm not trying to, you know, pick this apart, but it looks like it could use some editing. You know, it says here under overview and development of policies, number one, these plans will help the town of Fairfax become an organization that is responsive and considerate of all its residents. That's assuming that we're not, you know, what's going on here. Also on the race, number one, the racial equity plan, it does say to create new policies around areas like hiring, practice, employee retention, employment promotion, leadership and management policies, contracting and town partnerships with community organizations. That's a huge thing. That's money. There's a lot of organizations out there that are, there's 501(c) corporations that are nonprofits. And they're making money off of towns, you know, off this RESJ, excuse me, this development of these types of policies. So I would just kind of be very conscious of these type of things because they will cost money, which brings me to one more thing. Sorry, I'm just going through these 14 pages here on the fiscal impact. Reading through all that, it says right here in black and white, there's no fiscal impact associated with this report. How is that even possible? So I would, I would like to see some sort of funding, so how these, all these options are going to be funded. Every single one of these should have some sort of, you know, revenue stream attached. Where's that coming from? Like how, you know, that, there's a, an analysis that needs to happen. It doesn't seem to have happened. And sorry, most importantly, the, and I've lost, sorry, I'm trying to go through this, lost my place. It had to do with the free speech thing and the, basically, there's a line in there that says, I guess, a, a, a meeting facilitator can move on from somebody who's speaking. I didn't quite understand that language, but I would like to see the rest of my time. Do you want to, you want to speak?
Okay.
To Jane Richardson here.
Thank you. The first thing, I wanted to thank Police Chief Tabaranza also for that immense amount of work and making it so clear. And such a wonderful thing that anybody can look at and understand, and we shall never be accused of being non-transparent in the police department again. And I thought the best thing that came out of this whole report was actually something that said was resurrected from years ago, coffee with a cop. What a concept. No outside facilitator, nobody gets paid. It's Fairfax at its best. Coffee with a cop, perfect. Start with high school students, senior citizens. I am really thinking and recommending and begging you, don't spend any more money on outside facilitators and everybody else telling us what to do. I mean, I don't agree that Fairfax, we have the same fight as all the major cities and other communities. We don't. We're a little tiny town and we've gotten along really well for such a long time until all this came up. And this created a very divisive rupture in the town. I've certainly noticed it and I felt it. Who says we need institutional change or that, that we, Fairfax, suffer from systemic racism? Who says that? Where is their proof of that? It's never been brought out. We certainly should examine what's in place and see what we can do to improve things. But, but don't start out from the assumption that, that we are all painted with a dreadful brush of that book, The White Fragility, that we are, just because we're white, we're racist and we have to say we are, and if we don't, then that means we're racist. In other words, there's no way out of that one. I'm afraid I thought RESJ was a dreadful disaster. Forty thousand dollars, that's 13 meetings. That's like three thousand dollars a meeting. And what did we, what was the result? Not really anything, nothing substantial. Councilmember Kohler asked them at one of the last meetings, please tell us what it is you intend to do or you'd like to do. Never answered. It was just simply asking for more money and more complaining about how they felt attacked and wounded and frightened because we, the public, didn't agree with them. The public was systematically disrespected. And I'm sorry, town council never noticed it, never reprimanded their bad behavior, only reprimanded the public. So I hope if this goes forward, next time, if there's a new RESJ that you do include some people with other voices, not just a group that's all in lockstep, going to, according to a book, and anybody who doesn't agree is considered bad news. And just the general plan, please don't, don't just arbitrarily start changing words without the public having a chance. That's not fair. There's too much of that going on. We need, we're part of this. We need to be, we need to speak and be heard. And we don't want to just be dictated to by a small group of people who are, think all the same. Thank you.
Okay, Jane, I have to say I don't agree with some of the things you said there, but we're gonna go on. Thank you for your comment.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Joe McGary. Deborah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council, for hearing me. First of all, I have to say that I agree with everything that Jane said, just said, having been witness to it. And pretty much everything that John said. I'm confused. I'm wondering if the lovely Lorena is an employee of Fairfax or is she a consultant? And this whole report was, was never discussed in council meetings, and yet here we have it. I think that the problem with the direction that, oh, first, also, I want to say that I'm grateful to see that there was very little change perceived to be needed with our wonderful police department. I think we probably have the best police department in the country. So the, the, this whole business is, is based upon the supposition that Fairfax is a racist community. And, and if it is, then we want to fix it. But so far, nothing has been specifically identified that says that Fairfax is racist. And, and, you know, to get on this, this woke wagon, because the rest of the country is, is, doesn't make sense to me. So I think the basic premise is flawed. I guess, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Deborah.
Can I just add, Mayor, Lorena is, has been working for us, loaned from Corte Madera, and I believe will be working on a shared services, will should be working half time for us. And she is one of our staff that's new to us and has really added value in the short time she's volunteered her time with us. So she's not a consultant, and I'm very honored that she's come to join us.
Thank you, Barbara, for that clarification. And indeed, Lorena has also worked on a number of other analysis projects for the town and has completed them all very successfully. So, Michelle, if we can go to the next public comment, please.
Yes, the next speaker is Joe McGary. Joe, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, I appreciate the, the RIPA data being the dashboard coming up. And, and yeah, I want to hold up what Veronica said about the importance of racial demographics when looking at these statistics. And so I'll just point out that the statistics that were given there, that, that black people were stopped at nine times their demographic presence in the town. And that they were, you know, when, when taking the data out and putting it to population per, stops per 1,000 people, they were stopped at 10 times the rate of white people. So, so thank you for Veronica for bringing up, it's an important lens when looking at, at police data, particularly in a county like Marin and a town like Fairfax with such racial disparity. And, and I just want to echo, you know, all the gratitude for, for Lorena's work here and stepping into, yeah, a, a difficult moment. And I'm sure there was a lot of research going back to see the path of RESJ and where they were. And then, you know, speaking with the folks from Ross Valley Unite and trying to provide some direction moving forward. So you, you did great up there in your presentation and, and then thank you for all that. And I just, a couple of thoughts about some of the presentation, some of the content was just in the police piece of the, the mission of mentioning public safety alternatives. And that, that was part of the mission of the PIPSA. And, you know, I don't think it's the intention of the, of the report, but, and, and hopefully council can redirect it a bit. But it kind of gives the perception that possibly using the racist attacks during RESJ and PIPSA as a vehicle to end the exploration of public safety alternatives. So I just want to make sure council takes that moment to maybe redirect and, and that we continue exploring those as that was part of the, the mission. And yeah, just lastly, I know that Ross Valley Unite has, has given a lot of feedback and I, I just want to amplify their priorities, you know, to administer the survey that the Police Practices and Public Safety Alternatives Committee for RESJ spent over five months developing. And that we promptly adopt the edits of the general plan that Shelley Hamilton developed and research and implement an appropriate racial equity and personal bias training required for members of all Fairfax town committees. And that if RESJ were to continue, that there'd be a website created and published steps to take when acts of hate or discrimination occur and how to report such acts. And once again, if RESJ does continue, that the town ought to adopt the recommendations from the RESJ ad hoc application committee for new applications. And yeah, the, the numbers of the committee, making sure that we, we make it something that's sustainable and seven members. And, and want to, to hold that up. And then I'm not sure, I'm out of time, but I just want to, I hope council can take the opportunity to, to kind of model, you know, anti-racism. And, and at some point, you know, speak to the role of, of not calling out some of the racist attacks. I think it would be, it would be great for all to see. And I know it's a difficult thing and, and maybe we'll get there, but thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Joe.
The next speaker is Eva, followed by Jess. Eva, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I wanted to address some of the comments. I certainly, I certainly have sympathy for people who are fed up with politically correct language and a certain level of wokeness, but it is by the data indisputable that Fairfax, as well as the rest of Marin County, has a serious problem with both racial segregation, racially disparate arrest demographics and racism in general. And so John and Jane and Deborah Benson, I'm very sorry, but that's reality. This, the, the county itself was ranked the most racially segregated and disparate county in the entire state of California in 2017. And you guys didn't make a ton of progress in the last four years, during which time we saw some, some pretty interesting interaction between some of the old guard and, and some people who on RESJ who were really just trying to, to work through some of these problems, however, however hard it was. And it was challenging for them. I want to point out, as someone whose great grandfather was processed through Angel Island before the 1906 quake, you know, we have seen a lot of interesting things in Marin County. And surely, surely it should not, it should not really escape anyone's notice that there is a conservative element that is kind of a newbie element. So they have, these are people who came into the county in the, somewhere around the 1960s, 70s, 80s. And they tend to, you know, they filtered in from the East Coast or the Midwest, but they don't really understand the history of the, the, the Bay Area or the state and, and all that came before it. And in some ways, I think RESJ's biggest challenge was, was people not understanding their own history. Particularly, particularly here in the Bay Area. But having said that, you know, it, it seems clear that there is an issue with racism and, and it should be addressed. I think Lorena did a commendable job. But I would say that some of the comments from, from John and Deborah and, and Jane really were reflected. They reminded me a lot of the kind of comments that you heard from people in the deep south when civil rights workers came in in the, in the 60s to register voters. And the sort of like, how dare you call us racist? How dare you say we have a problem? Well, you have a problem. That's reality. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Eva.
The next speaker is Jess, followed by Liesel Blash.
Hi, this is Jess Lerner. And first, I just want to echo the gratitude I have for seeing Lorena do this presentation and bring forth this plan, which was really excellent and surprising. And I was really grateful to see that and hear that, as well as the dashboard from the police department, which is very helpful and, and definitely a huge step towards transparency and making progress. And agree with what others have said about their suggestions on that. And I just, I just want to address that the fact that the RESJ, it's, you know, at the last meeting, there is a lot of unresolved pain. And this work is very messy and painful, the work of doing anti-racist work and trying to transform consciousness and mindsets and deep-seated patterns and systemic oppression. And the people who are on the RESJ gave a lot of time and energy and were in many ways wounded or hurt by a lot of what went on in these meetings unchecked. And I know that the council probably felt helpless because of the Brown Act, but want to recommend some things that you can do going forward if you were to have a RESJ again or another committee where there's an issue with public comment that is hostile or inappropriate in any way. And so right now, I feel like it's really important to acknowledge the work that the RESJ did and in some way try to find some sort of way to transform or heal what folks on that committee experienced, so that those folks may want to do this work again or continue to partner with the town. So first I want to ask that you do, as others have said, follow all the recommendations of Ross Valley Unite. The, you know, lists that you have are familiar with and the recommendations from the general plan to creating a website and all of the other recommendations. And I also want to request that, you know, two things that I sent you a letter about, which is, when there's public comment in a meeting that isn't, is in any way hostile or inappropriate, to not respond to it in that moment. And also that if there's any personal attacks on anyone, whether it's community members or council members, that that would be responded to by muting the person and repeating the protocols that you state at the beginning of every meeting. Like this is what we expect in terms of behavior. So there are ways to protect people who volunteer and that there are ways for accountability. And just want to echo what Joe McGary said about the town council being role models for anti-racist behavior. And want to ask that you step up and do that in the work that you're stepping forward to do right now. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Liesel, followed by Wendy. And Liesel, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. I just wanted to-
Right. I just wanted to say great staff report, uh, and I, I really love the focus on collaboration and empirical data, which is very important and self-reflection. So by developing standardized processes for self-examination, you know, Fairfax can, um, really address any gaps that we have in terms of racially equitable systems. But we can also celebrate where we're excelling because we may just reveal many things where we are doing really great. So, um, you know, some people are saying this is very negative and I don't think that at all. Um, there are some really great suggestions in that report about, you know, events and outreach to celebrate diversity and learning more about the richness of our greater Bay Area community and Fairfax, um, which I think are really commendable and, um, are certainly not, you know, the down, I think some people are suggesting that some of this is. We do have data about systemic and overt racism in town and, and in Marin, as certain speakers have mentioned. Um, we recently had reports of school kids suffering overt racist attacks in town. We have kind of a segregation problem that's historical. We've had what we call microaggressions from people who sometimes act out of unconscious bias and sometimes conscious bias towards people of color in our town. Um, we also have a lot of joy and wonder and kindness and self-reflection that we really need to encourage. And I think that some of the activities in this report will help us get there. Um, there's kind of old fashioned notion that discussing racial equity is somehow being racist. Um, and exactly the opposite is true. So I want to suggest that what we got out of ResJ was that Fairfax stopped brushing racial equity and reforging under the rug. And, um, we're starting to have this positive discussion about it and, and moving forward. And this report is the result of, um, a lot of the, the, uh, pain and suffering of the last years of ResJ meetings. I also just want to mention that I think that, you know, a comment was made about the lovely Lorena, which I thought was a little bit on the edge of a sexist comment. I really think that commenting on the appearance of a staff member is inappropriate. And it's especially concerning when it's directed at a smart, intellectual woman. I really think that we should be questioning that kind of language. It, it seems a little demeaning to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liesel.
The next speaker is Wendy, followed by, uh, Jane or John. I guess it will be Jane. Okay, Wendy, you're unmuted now.
Hi, um, this is Wendy and I, um, was a long time, 11 year Fairfax resident and I'm not anymore. And I missed the entire presentation, but I feel called to say something because of the comments that I heard that deeply disturbed me. Um, and I just want to say that systemic racism exists everywhere in our country and Fairfax is absolutely not exempt. And, um, really, really heartened to hear, um, all the work that's being done in Fairfax around these issues. And, um, I can say for myself that I've had my own, um, what became quite obvious to me, bias treatment, um, that was part, might have been racially motivated, um, mistaking me for not being white because of my hair and because of my dark skin. So, um, I just want to say, um, I agree with everything that Liesel just said, of course. And I'm just heartened to hear, um, that there's good work being done still on these issues. And, um, and I'm really disheartened to hear the comments, um, denying systemic racism existing in Fairfax. Cause it, it does. There's no doubt about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. We seem to be having some technical difficulties with our timer. So, um, if it's okay, I will use my iPhone to time people and just, uh, let them know when there's about 25 seconds left. Does that sound okay? Until we get our timer back?
Yeah, yeah, I've got to watch out here too.
Okay. Thank you. And I apologize.
Mayor, if I could, I, I just noted that, uh, Michelle, you mentioned that Jane or John had raised their hand again, but I believe they both spoke already. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I, I realized that I got a little confused, so, um, I, I won't be calling on that, uh, speaker. Sorry. Thank you. Uh, next will be Damian, followed by Veronica Garretts. Oh, wait. Veronica also already spoke on this. Okay. Yes. So as Councilmember Cutrano has reminded us, we can only take one comment per person, per item. So Damian, I am unmuting you now and setting my timer. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you. Hi, um, thanks for this report. It was a very thorough report. May not be perfect, but it was very thorough and, uh, we, we appreciate it. I have, um, I want to speak on policing because of course there are issues with education and Fairfax, uh, housing. But my experience is with the notion of quote unquote policing, um, as an African American male. You know, there are people in Fairfax who li- live on the hill and they drink their fancy coffee in the morning and they have never been pulled over for no reason. But, um, as an African American male who's been in Fairfax for sporting events, for house parties and hanging out, uh, birthday parties, playing basketball at Drake High School hundreds of times and, um, you know, driving through the community, being a passenger in the community and walking through the community. Fairfax police were very, very aggressive. They are no different than other aggressive, um, police forces. You know, they definitely, definitely are guilty of, the numbers don't lie. The numbers don't lie. And they were, probably still are, but were very, very aggressive with harassing black men, point blank. And this is from experience. There's not some, uh, uh, I'm not giving you secondhand, okay? Me and all my black buddies hanging out in Fairfax with our white buddies. Yeah, white and black people can be friends. It may sound strange, but we have, we are, you know, have many friends in that area. We were harassed numerous times when nobody wanted to hear it. Nobody wanted to hear it then. Thank you for coming to the table now and listening. Let's move forward to make this a better situation, even playing field. Okay. Fairfax is not immune, uh, to racism on all levels. But my experience with the policing, uh, the notion of policing was actually horrid, scary, humiliating, intimidation, bullying, you know, I have stories to go back and back. And, and, and actually the numbers don't tell the whole story. I'll tell you why. Because many times when you're on foot and you're a young man, you're walking, the call doesn't make it into the, to the, uh, to the call center, whatever you want to call it. You know, we've been harassed many times. Probably still to this day, but there's no call in, there's no checking a name, ID. They'll harass you, corral you, surround you, ask you questions, try to intimidate you and then walk away or drive away without calling it in. So, so the numbers don't tell the whole story as far as policing black men. It's worse than what those, those numbers are horrid, but it's actually worse than that.
You have 10 seconds left. I'm sorry to interrupt at this point.
Thank you. So thanks for, uh, listening. I've been listening to this for, for several weeks now. I've been hearing about it. But Fairfax, yeah, work to do. And I thank you for leaning in and working on this, these, these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our, our timer is almost fixed, but I won't do this again. Um, the next speaker is Richard, followed by, uh, oh, there's the timer. Richard, followed by Point Dexter, is all the name says. I can't think of your first name. Sorry. Okay, Richard, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Um, good evening, council. Um, I was very heartened to, um, to learn that Lorena has been added to our staff. And, um, uh, I, I really, really enjoyed the presentation. I thought it was a, a good roundup and synthesis, given, you know, uh, all that's unfolded in the last year. And honestly, as I was, you know, stepping through it with everyone, I was like, wow, I, I think this is something that could bring everyone together. I was expecting almost unanimous, uh, positive reaction to it. And so I was very taken aback when, uh, a few people who keep using their refrain, a small vocal group seemed to need to look in the mirror because they seem to be the small vocal group. Um, and no one's being dictated to. And it was a wonderful presentation. And, you know, the point here is that we want to organically improve. That's how we make positive change. That's how things move forward. We don't want to be static and stagnant. And many, many, many people in the community care about this and have spoken up and have attended and volunteered to be on the ResJ. Um, and so I think it's mostly positive. I've really appreciated council's leadership throughout this last year around this and supporting this. It hasn't been easy. It's been acrimonious and contentious. And, uh, I thought that was a, a really excellent report. I support almost every, every recommendation was in there. I don't know that they're all practical from time and budget, but, um, really good work. And I really appreciate the majority of the comments that have, have been called in tonight. And, uh, I was, I was really impressed with the presentation and I remain hopeful that we can, um, we can continue to come together as a community. I mean, I, I've said it all along. I keep using the word dialogue and I don't know why there's such a resistance for people to just listen and hear other people's points of view and maybe learn something and understand that there are neighbors that are having other experiences. And this, this term microaggression has come up a lot. I think it's a, it's a term that's really worth exploring and learning about and understanding the folks that call those out, what they mean by that. And there's a lot to learn there. So anyway, thank you for, uh, excellent presentation. I support it. I hope you all take , you know, positive action on as much of it as you can. And again, I thank the council as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
The next speaker is Brian Point Dexter. Sorry about that. And you're unmuted now.
Thanks, council, for having us, uh, and, and allowing this comment. I want to echo some of the, the comments made by other folks. And first of all, just thank Damian. I think it takes a, a lot of bravery as a black person to, uh, come onto public comments and speak so frankly. Uh, the risk is that, uh, folks make themselves a target by doing that. And so it, it takes a lot of bravery and courage to, to do that. Thank you, Damian, for showing up in the way that you have today. The other comment that I want to make is, is that a form of microaggression is a repeated denial of things that have already surfaced. And we have a, at this point, a wealth of local to Fairfax and local to Marin County, uh, data. And that's empirical data and it's anecdotal data. That goes back to the listening session that we had over the summer. Uh, it goes back to some of the work that Ava is doing to, uh, publish and Joe McGary are doing to publish arrest data. It, it goes back to courts, as Ava referenced, um, and court decisions that are trying to desegregate throughout Marin. This is not a, this is not a set of national facts that people are reacting to. It's a set of local facts. And that fact base is well known. And the repeated denial of that fact base and the repeated questioning of it is in itself a, a tactic that is often called racist behavior. Uh, because it is just a, a denial of, of what, uh, is, is clearly the product of a lot of hard work, uh, to produce transparency at where our county is. So I echo all of those comments. I'd also like to add that, um, I agree that we shouldn't be governed by small vocal minorities. And I, I want to point to the, the survey, uh, about policing that, that mentioned that mental health, um, was a top priority for the town. That's a survey that went to the entire town. So I'd like to lift up Veronica's suggestion of having a mental health dispatch and directing more resources there. I think that's something that we can find significant common ground on, including, uh, from the, the police who want to also have that situation be very clear and sorted out. That folks who are in real need of mental health, uh, care, uh, get the right specialists they deserve and that, um, police aren't put in situations that are, um, either they're not trained for or that are dangerous to them. Um, so I, I want to lift that up. The final thing I want to add is that this report, Lorena, thank you very much. It's very thorough. And I just want to say, uh, maybe as a closing comment, that, um, this shouldn't be treated as a checklist. This is an ongoing effort. And to, if we truly are not a, a racist town, then this ongoing effort will kind of reveal that we're doing a good job. I think what we do need to have in addition to that ongoing effort is some, some real, uh, checks on ourselves to, to evaluate how we're doing. Uh, what are the measures that we're going to look at that will say, hey, we actually are performing well? For instance, one of the measures I'd like to see is what kind of representation by people of color we have in local committees and in local government. Cause right now, uh, our record is pretty poor. Uh, most of the people that have volunteered, for instance, for the ResJ, uh, found that there was enough structural, uh, inhibition against them to, to not volunteer their services anymore. So I'd like to see those kinds of ongoing metrics.
So if you can wrap up, thanks.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you for the, the time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. You're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. The ResJ was basically a huge, uh, violation of the Brown Act. I've watched and rewatched several of the meetings. So as far as getting public comment on things, there was no interest. When you're in a community and you're telling 90, the 90%, though of course there have never been any genetic testing done and for the majority of people in Fairfax, and people do lie on surveys. So even that's questionable. There's been a, uh, just shutting down of public comment on this. And if you watch the, the videos, I think it was on the YouTube now, since there's no link anymore, uh, from the town website. It's on YouTube, Town of Fairfax. Watch the videos. We spent $65,000. I've watched meetings that 40 minutes into it, nothing has happened. I watched a meeting where, uh, the facilitator played a song by somebody else. That means that she made $36 off of that song. Did she send that to the artist? I doubt it. We're looking at a, a lot of issues here. And I think what people are confusing is that we looked at this committee, ResJ, and they didn't do anything. And you want to talk about, oh, it was like so harmful and stuff. Nobody worked together. People couldn't talk to each other. People couldn't get anything done. Even one of the members said, name me five things that we've done in six months after $50,000 we've spent. Name me five things and nobody had even one. Are there racists in Fairfax? Probably. There's 8,000 people. Just on a percentage basis, you can look at that and figure out there are racists here. How much money are we going to spend on how many people? I asked before, how many? Do we have Ku Klux Klan, uh, Minutemen, whatever they call themselves? Where are all these groups if we're so, we're so vicious and violent? What is the, what is the percentage? And as far as having Acrimony and Cutrano continue on, if there is a continuation of the ResJ in some form, I think they've proven by their actions in letting racist comments and gestures by committee members there go by and trying to, uh, clamp down on public comment, which was just questioning what they were doing. I don't understand what, why they would continue. So yeah, I'm the person who got flipped off. So somebody yucked my yum. Really? $65,000 to come out with that? What we really looked at is that we had a committee and several people on there had serious mental health issues that they need to deal with.
We're going to mute you. You are disparaging everybody on ResJ, people on the council and your fellow citizens. And your time has been up. Any other public comment?
Uh, there are no other raised hands at this time.
Okay. We'll bring this back to the council. We have never done this during my time as mayor or on ResJ, but we've had many, many, many people email us and ask us. We heard some of that on tonight's meeting, but we've got many emails encouraging us to stand up to comments that are disparaging to people. And it's really hard to know when that line is crossed. It's okay to say that money should be spent in a different way and so forth, but it is not okay to say that a whole committee is to disparage all the people on the committee who are trying incredibly hard under a lot of obstacles, including who are trying incredibly hard under a lot of obstacles, including some of these very speakers. And actually, the work that RESJ did was what gave us a good start to what we've just, we're going to be looking at tonight, this list, which I did hear a lot of positive comment about that. And so Lorena, again, thank you very much for getting us started with this work. And now we can continue with the discussion of it.
Mayor, could I just make a request? Bob Curry is here from the county regarding item twelve, the smoking ordinance. And I don't think we'll be able to get to it tonight. So I'm wondering if we can continue it to the next meeting rather than have him try to stay. And I know we don't usually do this in the middle, but I thought before we all gave our comments.
Yeah, let me just ask, ask our town manager, Adam, is there any problem with postponing continuing the smoking ordinance question too?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no urgency to that. I agree with the request to continue the item.
Okay. So if there's no objection from other council members, yeah, I'll go ahead and we will continue that item. And Adam, I can leave it, leave it with you as we discuss what meeting that'll be on to, we don't have to figure that out right at this moment.
I'm, I'm going to make a request, a motion that we continue it till October twentieth. And I think we need a motion, Mayor. Excuse me for interrupting you.
Looking at our forecast here.
Well, I just think Lorena's been working with us on this and I know she's going to continue, but it would be a good idea to bring it. I don't think it's very controversial. It's just a matter of, we won't get to it tonight, I'm sure.
All right, so we'll interrupt the item that we're on right now. You've just made a, you go ahead and make the motion then.
I'd like to make a motion to continue item twelve, the smoking ordinance, to October twentieth, please.
Second, second for Cuttrono. And I'll take the roll call on that. Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuttrono?
Yes.
Councilmember Koller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So that item, which was the item twelve, is continued until October twentieth. Okay, thank you, Barbara. And now Bob Curry can take the rest of the night off.
Mayor and Chance, may I just ask, and sorry, Chance, I'm stepping, stepping ahead, but if you would, please clarify exactly how you'd like to structure our discussion through this item. This is, this is, this is massive. And so I think it's really important that we get really clear and organized before we go all over the place. So yeah, I would really appreciate that before we start.
Chance, I'm welcome. I'm quite open to suggestions. I had suggested earlier that the first thing we could do is go through and point out any items that we thought were really problematic or that we thought were fairly urgent or low hanging fruit, as it were, things that could move forward quickly. And then I wasn't clear what the rest of it would be, but I figured we would just end up in a discussion. Chance, what thoughts do you have about how we can approach this?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. I was gonna attempt to tackle that in the way I thought it could best be tackled was by looking at the items on the reference of the menu items, like at a higher level, like the one, two, three, four and five. It felt like there were some standout things through the presentation and the staff report that felt like clear priorities or things that could establish a, a process so we don't have to hash out everything right now. Although I agree completely with the, if there are things that are, that don't make sense or council doesn't feel like they make sense, that they can be totally like put, put on the bike rack and they don't have to be pursued by staff. But yeah, I just, before I begin with that, I just wanted to commend you, Mayor, for stepping up when some of those really harsh, disrespectful, demeaning comments were made just moments ago during public open time. I appreciated that. But yeah, I felt as though the, the standout in the whole reference menu of items was number one, which were the ones that were things that could be handled immediately, like the general plan update. I believe that's even already on the agenda schedule. And Councilmember Goddard has helped to, to move that along and Shelley Hamilton as well. And so felt like, you know, things like that make sense as well as some of those internal things, like the handbook for recruiting seems like a no brainer to, to have staff pursue something like that, as well as the diversity and inclusion training program, particularly because some of the most harmful comments in terms of like literally people in the community gaslighting RESJ members that are people of color and saying there's no racism in Fairfax when these people of color have come forward saying they've experienced it. Or, you know, disregarding the, the county discussions around the legacy of redlining and, and racial covenants. You know, when, when there's ignorance around that and some of those comments that we're hearing around that are, are coming from community leaders that are on town appointed boards and commissions, it feels like that's, that's definitely a high, a glaring priority and something that staff can move forward on. Or at least come back with a recommendation of, of how to come, you know, how to move forward on that. And I also wanted to say that, you know, the, the racial equity action plan feels like it could set up a roadmap for some of these other items and, and help to prioritize some of the, the items under, you know, two, three, four and, and even five. And the other thing I wanted to add was the community survey for the town of Fairfax, depending on how it's structured, could probably also identify some of the gaps in, in this. I know we've already done a survey that, that RESJ put out, but it, it could help us with the sort of dual attempt to figure out how best to use those American Rescue Plan dollars as well as some of the other things identified, identified here. And so it just seems like the, the first tranche of items in the menu are things that are quicker, things that could be done by staff and don't require bringing in outside partners immediately and don't require, you know, us to have a long drawn out, drawn out discussion tonight around those things. But that was a standout thing. The only thing I was going to recommend outside of item, numbers, number one, is maybe that, you know, Connor, the new head of the Mobile Crisis Response Team, has done a presentation to the police chiefs in Marin. There's going to be a discussion at the homelessness committee of mayors and council members of Marin next week about this issue. And I feel like maybe we could direct staff to invite Connor to come speak and give a presentation similar to how we had MMWD or Marin Water come and, and give a presentation in recent months about the drought. But welcome Connor and see, you know, what the path forward is for the Marin Crisis Response Team as he sees it and see how we could, you know, fold work into the, the racial equity action plan if we decide to move forward with that item. But that's just like at a high level, some of the, the prioritization that, that went off in my mind, but I'm excited to hear what my fellow council members have to share.
That's very hopeful. Thank you, Chance.
Yeah, so I had gone through all of these in way too much detail myself and sent comments. And first of all, I do want to thank Lorena for all her work. I've had the pleasure of working with her on the smoking ordinance and I know she did a tremendous amount of research. My only sort of, I guess, concern is that we lost pretty much all of our members of the RESJ over time. It wasn't just the last meeting. We lost members over time. And we are left with two members who are not people of color, plus our two council members who are not people of color. And I'm sort of wondering why we're looking at implementing potentially quite a few things without maybe saying, we took a pause on the committee for now. We'll let sort of some of the emotions heal and maybe just pick a few more simple things that we could proceed on without sort of, and I, I don't mean this in a negative way, kind of a scattershot way of, this is a very comprehensive list and it's a good thing to look at. And I do think when we started RESJ, it would have been nice to have something like this to have them sort of chew on rather than us, pretty much all of us, not people of color, making some judgments other than Lorena and possibly Vice Mayor Hellman. But what I would say is, and I just want to add one thing before I give my feedback is, I appreciate what you did, Mayor Ackerman, in calling out the disparaging comments. But I also want to say that when it's something we want to hear, it seems like it's okay. There have been disparaging comments on both sides of this. And I know a couple of years ago, when I was mayor, I tried to stop people from doing that and it was very unpopular. And we use Robert's Rules of Order and that's what you're reading when you start the meeting. And we should really try our best to have civility. We don't need to sign a new code, which Renee and I signed a few years ago and an initiative by the county. But we should really try our best to adhere to Robert's Rule of Order. And for, even if it's something that I might like, but it is negative towards other folks in our community, we should stop it. So my thoughts are this, and I differ somewhat from Councilmember Cuttrono, although I appreciate his good feedback. So I think some of these things are kind of big projects. And I think we should not embark on them at this time purely because they're huge projects. We don't have a new town manager yet. We're letting things sort of lie a little bit. And I know Ross Valley Unites is working on things and I know Adam has met with them and I'm sure you have, Bruce and Chance as well. But I would just say a couple of things, looking at item one, the racial equity action plan is not a bad idea, but I think it's just too comprehensive at this time. I don't think we need a handbook for recruiting, hiring and retaining employees at this time only because it's such a big undertaking. I think we can reach out to other towns and cities and see what they have. And I think the guidance should be this, is we need to recruit and make sure we do the outreach to get the most diverse candidates we can, even if it means that we're taking longer to do so. So I think there's parts of this that we could move forward on that make just a ton of sense. The general plan update, at this point, I sat with Shelley Hamilton on the planning commission. I have a lot of respect for her. She's not a person of color. And the general plan update is a huge undertaking. One person's view of what is negative language may not be another one's view of that kind of language. I suggest as we go through and we work on different areas of the general plan, maybe through our housing element, we look at those during those steps. I don't want to be here for looking at the entire general plan with one person's view of what is negative language or harmful language, and then we're going to have a huge discussion. I just don't think, I think we should look at it piecemeal. And I think, for example, Councilmember Goddard brought something up in something we did a couple of months ago. That makes sense to me to do things piecemeal rather than, you know, what is that thing about eating an elephant one bite at a time? The community survey, again, I think it's a little premature. I think when we work on this at some point in the future, we ought to really look for somebody who can help us form such a survey rather than doing another survey where we get a lot of input and maybe we haven't put the most thought into it. Diversity and inclusion training is a great idea. And I know San Antamo (San Antonio) just had a training. They put out an RFP. I know other towns are maybe contemplating training. Why don't we see what San Antamo (San Antonio) did? Or why don't we partner with other cities rather than going through this ourselves? And so other things I would just say is, I, I don't, I think there's collaboration that can be done on job pairs in the future. Pop-up defense is something that could go to Park if, you know, and we could ask Park to do more outreach to diverse groups. But those are great ideas. We already partner with the local, the Fairfax Library on age friendly. So if there's something that we want, let's talk to Margaret Miles, our branch manager. And they're really interested in partnering with us. We do quite a bit with age friendly, so it's a good opportunity. I think the economic development piece should be a let's wait and see for a while. And I think our two-way communications, two-way communications, we do have Robert's Rules of Order. Let's use it. Let's, let's think about how we can do that so people don't get angry at us at trying to sort of stop a meeting when things are going awry. And we, we already teamed up with community-based organizations when we worked with Ritter House and St. Vincent's on our rental assistance program. And I think one of the things I was really happy about doing that is I thought that would give us an opportunity for in the future to work with either of them because we have some experience now. But I think I would sort of like to wait and see on that. And we do have a communications person, Camille. And I think she's trying her best to get the word out there. And maybe since Lorena's on board, she could give some feedback on some new ideas for ways we could, we could proceed forward. As far as the public safety and police practices, on the Mobile Crisis Response Team, at one time, there was a discussion in the county that all the cities and towns would contribute more funds or resources to the Mobile Crisis Response Unit. So they would have people that would truly be available because from what I understand, even when they added a half a person, they're not available. I also understand they typically don't want to be first in because the, the situations can be dangerous. I like the idea of having them do a presentation, but I also would like to see, I think Councilmember Cuttrono and Goddard, you're on the homeless committee. It's not all about homeless people, but maybe you could bring this to MCC, MC or maybe Mayor Ackerman. What happened to that, that was out there about providing more funding to that group so that they can be more available? As far as the other recommendations, Coffee with a Cop, I know Chief Tavarranza started that. I think he had to stop because of COVID. The annual statistics is great. I'd also like him to talk more about the police practices. We've had progressive annually, we've had progressive policies on the books for years. So a lot of that and the training, we didn't go over that tonight, but that's on course. I don't think we need to make big changes there right now. But again, I just want to make us realize that we did have a group. They weren't completely successful for a variety of reasons. And I don't think we should say, hey, now we can do it all. I think we should wait a little bit and learn a little bit more. So thank you for listening and sorry for being long-winded.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you for being so organized with your comments. Stephanie?
Thank you, Barbara. And thank you, Chance. I will try to be as organized as you are, but we'll see. Okay, um, so in response to Councilmember Cuttrono, I would agree on prioritizing the category one. I would agree on prioritizing the category one. Um, and I'm just going to take this piece by piece, and I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. Um, I absolutely think and support the action plan. And I, I like your comment, Chance, about it offering a roadmap. I think that would be a really strategic and smart way to go for us. Um, the handbook is really something that we should have. Um, it's past due. Uh, this is something that was developed in the private sector, you know, in the 1990s. Like, this is not, we do not have to recreate the wheel. We should absolutely sign up for GAWAAR membership. It's a thousand dollars. We've been talking about it for over a year. Other jurisdictions in Marin, our members, they have off-the-shelf tools and kits and documentation that we can literally draw from, or we can just look at our neighboring towns and see what, what exists. Um, so I'm hundred percent behind both those two items. Um, I want to touch on or expand on the content um, that's related to the general plan. So a couple of things, um, it's a little vague what's, what's in here, and I'm sorry that Shelley's uh, work was not included as an attachment. And that's the intent, uh, to provide the community really as an educational opportunity. Um, it's not, um, respectfully, Councilmember Kohler, it's not a singular person's point of view. It's based on Richard Rothstein's The Color of Law, and he spent many, many hours researching the history of land use and housing policies. And I know you, you know who he is, and you've probably read that book. Um, so so while many of the land use policies that were segregationist and downright racist have, those are legacy and those have been, you know, corrected. There are still, um, as Shelley explains in her document, these dog whistle phrases that are still in use today. And they were developed as intentional strategies to perpetuate segregation. And so among these is a term, uh, neighborhood character that we have throughout the general plan. And it's, uh, focused on shifting language, but does not involve making any material changes. This is her, her project, if you will. She's identified sixty or so instances of this term. And for each use of it, she has provided, um, a substitute. And it, it's, it's, it's ready to go. It is, um, something that the planning department should look at. And it's something that this council should look at, and the community should be aware of. Um, all we have to do is move away from this language and take a step, um, forward and um, away from this, uh, legacy of, of segregation. So using terms like design aesthetic or hu- um, human scale development, um, that more accurately communicate, um, the existing meaning. Um, so I'm, I'm just going to leave that there. We do have it slated on, um, or targeted for next council meeting, and I, very much hope it stays there. And I'll also note that it was, um, I think it was a top priority of, on the email that the Ross Valley Unites sent us. Um, the community survey, uh, this one is a little tricky for me. I absolutely think we should pursue it. I, I do worry about the, the state of, the state of it, um, as it is, as it has been developed. I think, um, it creates risk, um, if we don't have a company that has a background, it, it's a science, developing surveys is, is a science and, um, I'm a little concerned about, um, getting something out that could be, um, an opportunity for, um, criticism or that it was, we unconsciously created questions that were biased, inherently biased. And so that is my, um, point of view on that one. Diversity training, absolutely. Yes to that. Um, I think we can hold off on the job fairs. The pop-up event is something that I think that this community would really embrace. There's a, uh, program called Spread Love in Mill Valley. They've had a couple of, um, similar concepts of what, how this is described that I've, um, attended, and they're wonderful. So I, and I like the idea, Councilmember Kohler, of, um, you know, involving Park and all the commissions, you know, this work should and could transcend all of our commissions. So I, I do appreciate that, um, idea. Um, I'm, I'm okay with waiting on the economic, uh, development, although it's a high priority. Um, I would, I would be okay with, um, putting that off until we have a new town manager. And I think it's really interesting use of, um, ARPA funds for that. Um, and then I'm about to wrap up, but I, I just wanted to say, um, a couple more things. So with regard to section four, communicate and understanding, you know, there's there's a real opportunity for healing, for listening. Um, in the aftermath of RESJ, and as, as we've heard tonight, um, it, it feels really uncomfortable to me to put this off when it's so desperately needed. Um, and I guess I'd like to offer that how I'm, since I've stepped down from RESJ, it's really offered me the opportunity to explore my own white conditioning and how I show up. And I also really appreciate Damian stepping up and sharing, um, his experience. And I guess I'd like to offer that, you know, the notion of a paradox where two opposing truths or statements can be true. Right? We have a wonderful community. Um, and I think many of the white folks in this community feel threatened when they hear that there's racism happening, because in their, through their white lens, through their white conditioning, however you want to put it, they don't see it, they don't feel it. And there's a, there's a denial there. And yet we had the, this amazing listening session last summer where we heard, we heard a lot of stories and, and you know, we cannot negate the experiences of people of color. And so I really hope that we can start to have some community conversations. Um, because I think it's so desperately needed. So I would really welcome some discussion on that. Um, I, I don't really, I appreciate the, the, um, you know, the statement, uh, commitment to civil engagement, but I don't think that's going to do it. Um, I, I would like to see forums and educational, um, opportunities offered to the community and, and, and I open, and I'd like to hear from, from my colleagues about that. Um, as far as public safety and, um, police practice, thank you so much again, Chief, for your presentation. I did have a couple of questions that, um, I didn't hear. Um, so it sounds like you're in test, you're in test mode. You've, you have this data, uh, available early and, and, um, I'm just wondering if, um, is that, is that going to be ongoing? You said, you said that it was going to be April. The data would be available April for the year prior. And so, but it's, it looks like the data is up now. So I was a little confused on the, um, availability of data, um, on the, on the RIPA. So if somebody could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it. Um, and I would love to see Coffee, Coffee with a Cup, um, reinstituted. And on the mobile crisis, I had this similar question as, uh, Barbara and Chance. So we did allocate thirty-three thousand to, um, this, uh, what is it, MCRT? And I, I understand that we've been invoiced for it, um, but that, that was designated to support homeless, um, specifically, and not necessarily an extra staff person that has been kind of, um, discussed. So I, I really like the idea of, um, inviting the director to one of our meetings, hearing more, and, and how do, how do we get to a full-time operation or how, I don't know if it's reasonable that we have somebody for Fairfax, but, um, mental health is such a priority, and it's one of the least divisive topics, um, in our community that I, I really would like to prioritize that as well.
Vice Mayor Hellman, just a quick thing, um, we did not allocate that thirty-three thousand for that. That was for the homeless program for housing first projects. And there was discussion that about each city and town contributing money to the Mobile Crisis Response Unit, but that never has gelled. And that's what I was kind of asking, maybe Mayor Ackerman can bring that to MCCMC or Chance and Renee through the homeless committee. But that's a separate thing that I think got lost in the shuffle, not just with us, with everyone in the county.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I remember it coming up in our early sessions related to ARPA. So, um, thank you for the clarification.
For, uh, extra caseload management to deal with, um, the housing initiatives.
Really actually following on the, uh, on the receipt of, we got a hundred and twenty-eight Section Eight vouchers, um, that needed to have case management assigned to them. So that was why the urgency.
So, um, Stephanie, before, before you go, Renee, Stephanie asked a question of Rico that maybe, Chief Tavarranza could answer really quickly, just as to the availability of the data, the timeframe.
Yes, I can, I can clarify that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Vice Mayor, Stephanie Hellman had asked if, forgive me if I'm wrong here, about why we're still on test mode and how long that's going to continue. Is that correct?
Uh, not just, I appreciate you're in test mode, but I just wanted to kind of understand, um, are you going to have this data refreshed monthly or like, how is it? Because you started out by saying that an annual data will be available the April following, but then the data is like live now. So I was a little confused on.
Well, that, yeah, it's, it's data available after April, but.
Right, right. Okay, I'll, I'll try and clarify here and make it clear for everyone. It is, it is very confusing. So there's two different things that we were discussing here. RIPA here, that's the requirement of the, um, uh, of the law, where we are currently in test mode because it's a phased approach by DOJ, meaning we're not even allowed to report our data yet to them because we have, uh, larger agencies that are before us, right? We're, we're a smaller agency, so it's a phased approach. And when these larger agencies are required by a certain time, and then we get in line to when our agency size is required to report data. But we are accepted and approved to be in test mode, so we can send them our test data that they can check and, and kick back if there's issues or accept in a way for us to get ready to be in line to be live data per the RIPA legal requirements. This RIPA dashboard is in addition to this RIPA that we're doing like, if, if you, uh, want to, um, interpret it this way as extra credit, because we'd like to show our data ahead of time before DOJ even accepts our real data. And this RIPA dashboard allows for the data we're taking now, although we're in test mode with DOJ, to be able to show to the community, uh, as an ability to, to be transparent and to show that, uh, what we're doing now, although we're still in test data. As far as January, when, when January one, twenty-twenty-two approaches, we will now be in the actual reporting data per RIPA standards. And then from there, our data from twenty-twenty-two, from the beginning of the year all the way through the end, needs to be submitted to DOJ prior to April of twenty-twenty-three, so the following year. And then DOJ takes that data, and then they are able to then put it on their website after they vetted that information and tested everything we reported to them after April twenty-twenty-three. So if we didn't do the dashboard, the data we're collecting now in test mode, you wouldn't see. If we didn't do a dashboard, the data we're going to report from January one, twenty-twenty-two to December one, twenty-twenty-two, you wouldn't be able to see till twenty-twenty-three out, after April. I hope that makes sense.
So, so is there a chance, because I'm sort of forcing something. So is there a chance when the DOJ responds back that are there tweaks in the data is so that what you could have published in the past actually gets adjusted? Like, will there be a little bit of fluctuation?
There, there is, uh, this back and forth every day with us. Uh, there's a lot of backend work. So every data that the officer, based on every stop, every detention, every arrest, there's a series of all those requirements that they have to input through our CAD management system, which is our, our records retention system. That information has to be in there specifically in the way that DOJ requires it for them to accept. And of course, there's many variants and updates and programs has to be done in order for all this to fluidly and unanimously. And, um, also in consistently with all the departments statewide to have to go and be accepted by DOJ. So there's this constant, the officer puts the information in, the supervisors look at it, the supervisors approve it, and then our records people go over it with a third eye to make sure it's acceptable and reportable to DOJ while in test mode. Send it over. And sometimes DOJ will say, we don't like this, you know, send it back and adjust it more, take some out or add more. Then we resend it, and this is going on every day with every single information we're inputting. So there's a lot of backend work, a lot of, uh, correcting, there's a lot of vetting, there's a lot of making sure that we're, officers are understanding the need, the requirements. And then the supervisor's catching it, and then our records people making sure it's inputted properly so DOJ can accept it. So until all that is actually approved by DOJ, then we can upload it in this RIPA dashboard. So that's why our RIPA dashboard, my intent is to update it quarterly, four times a year. So because it takes time before the next quarterly phase in order to vet the data from the prior quarter. And then all of that information then gets sent to DOJ.
Can I just ask one question? So my assumption is when DOJ starts publishing the data after April twenty-twenty-three, it probably won't be in the format, the nice dashboard that you guys have created. They're going to have some probably unwieldy thing of a lot of data. But I'm guessing you're still going to continue with your dashboard that people can sort and do all that, even after RIPA is published. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, our intent is to make that dashboard a way, a user-friendly way for everyone to be able to interpret, interpret this data early and continuously throughout, even after DOJ is accepting our live data. Because I don't know what DOJ is going to put out, you know, if that's going to be easy to read, if it's, uh, if it's easy for anyone to be able to access or how to access it, we don't know that yet. Our, our, my point is get it out there as soon as possible in this dashboard that's easy to read and see and interpret. And it's also ever-evolving. So this is our, our first version that's live, you know, that was made live this morning. We're constantly evaluating our dashboard to make sure that it's easy, understandable, there's no confusion, and it's ever-evolving. So it, it's going to be, um, a work in progress throughout and continuously.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, uh, Renee is next to take a, as far as process, it looks like we're going through this sort of
Not bad.
First shots, it's going pretty well. Thank you.
Stephanie, were you, you were complete?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, thank you, everyone. And, um, Chief, this is, um, this is outstanding and, um, a great, um, a great addition to, um, our town and to, I believe, the confidence of the community. Um, and that we can have a common understanding and a place to look. Um, and from which to start a discussion, um, informally and, um, and, you know, with the data we need to, to make, to have a constructive conversation. So thank you for that. And Lorena, the report is, um, extraordinary, really. Um, thank you for the thorough research. We've never really had someone who could dig in like this, and this is such an important one that you've brought to us. So thank you. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to be brief, I really am, but I just wanted to start by saying, um, going back to when, um, now Vice Mayor Hellman and I really worked hard to, to, to stand up this RESJ and the vision for the RESJ. Um, we really, we explicitly formed the RESJ and empowered the committee to define their mission, their purpose, their objectives, their action plan. Because five white town council members, determining these these foundational elements, um, it perpetuates inherently racist systems and structures. So yes, it was messy and I'm 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 terribly sorry for pain caused. Um, but I do believe that we have reached a place where we can make some progress. I I, the idea of collateral damage, especially in something that's this truly traumatic and should be taken with 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 such serious, um, sorry, I'm actually rather emotional about this at this point. Um, I read something um, by Buckminster Fuller that said that you never change things by fighting the existing reality. To change something, um, build a new model that makes the existing model obsolete. And so as we were looking, my my priorities in terms of this list are really to focus in on number one and number four. Um, and I'm not going to repeat all of the different pieces of this. I think that every one of them um, in number one is vital that we take a look at. Um, but I do believe that even these ones like number one, which is to um, over the the overview and development of policies, plans and surveys, we can't do that in a void without um, the collaboration of of a group, an organized group that involves people of color such as Ross Valley Unite, and I haven't had this conversation with them. But I think from the get go, you know, we had certain certain ones of the certain categories said opportunity for collaboration. I think this one is is uh, is vitally in need of a collaborative effort because how do we know which policies? How do we know how um, how they're received by different stakeholders in our community? I think that that's foundational, that we figure out a way. And I don't think necessarily at this point, we're ready to set up a town committee that's constrained by the Brown Act and have a RESJ as we had originally envisioned a RESJ, and that's today. I do believe that a group like Ross Valley Unite could work with staff as we look at developing things to then come back for council um, council uh, discussion. Um, so I would recommend that we do that. San San and Selmo's Racial Equity Ad Hoc Committee, they call it, focused on policy, putting the policy in the middle of the table and taking a look at it together, um, recommending places, advising staff and council on where um, where we can make changes um, that really affect the people of color more so than obviously they affect me in my everyday world. So I would, I would recommend that. Um, same thing with diversity and inclusion training. Things have changed. I don't think we can take templates off of of shelves without having um, having the members of our community um, who have been marginalized, having eyeballs on those things. What's coming forward? The survey, we have to always ask, who's generating the questions? And I think, Lorena, you spoke beautifully to that. Um, uh, and so I I I recommend that we really do form that alliance, that that connection with um, and I don't know if it's Ross Valley Unite, I'm not trying to offer them up, I'm just wondering if maybe that discussion could start there. The other piece, number four, I think um, communications and understanding is is critical. And we see it, we're seeing it in our meetings, we're grappling with it. Um, I think we all agree that it would be really lovely to have a safe space um, where people could be heard and disagree um, safely. Um, we are not there, but I think um, that that tools for civil engagement and reminders and bringing back as as uh, as Barbara speaks, Robert Roberts Rules of Order, um, i- is important and that discussion has to happen. Um, we we need to make sure we broaden our participation, um, expanding outreach channels. Um, we need accessible, understandable language, we need it to be bilingual. Um, and uh, and people of color must be part of the discussion regarding regarding the policies and how we communicate what um, what what policies we're considering. Those things, you know, include hiring practices, employment opportunities and job applications, making sure that the call for applicants for boards and commissions, um, even to uh, make sure that we have publicized the um, the the call for candidates um, to run for election. We may need special um, and more robust outreach into corners and parts of the community that we don't usually reach. Um, and we need to make sure in every housing policy um, that that owners as well as renters are um, are represented as critical stakeholders. Um, in terms of number two and community collaboration, I think all of those ideas are absolutely worthy of exploration. Whatever we can implement is um, is a is a great thing. There's one thing I wanted to just call out. I love this idea of community collabora- uh, under community collaboration that um, create new events that are inclusive of everyone in Fairfax and also help residents understand and experience the greatness in the different cultures of the many people who live here. Um, I think we have opportunities to share our cultures, um, discover our universal themes, our commonalities and really celebrate those. And we don't do that enough. We live in silos. Um, economic development, I think um, it needs to be developed. There's a lot we need to learn. We don't even know the data, the numbers of minority owned businesses, but absolutely huge potential. And public safety and police practices, um, again, thank you, um, Chief Tavranza, um, for what you are doing. But I also would like to suggest that the Fairfax PD also partner with an existing organization. Um, it it in bring bring forward some of the things that the PIPSA was established to to achieve. But really for the for the, there there needs to be a conduit to the community that feels as though they've been unfairly targeted or have been marginalized in in our in our policing practices. Um, I think uh, Joe McGary bringing back that um, oh darn, what was that? What was going to say? And I forget, I'm so sorry. Um, but anyway, I do believe that we have to um, foster trust um, through communi- community um, communications and connection with BIPOC. And however that works, um, we need to have a flow of information that goes from from police to the community. And I think it can be developed in a um, in in a in a way where there's a consensus about the work plan um, and uh, the process by which that would um, exist. So uh, that's it. Thank you. It went longer. I'm sorry. Um, one and four. Let's go for it.
Thank you. These are, these are great comments. Um, I'm thinking that staff may have some of uh, some of what you were looking for with this. I'll go through just a few notes of mine, um, mostly just comments on the comments. Um, first, thank you, Rico. I'll just leave it at that. And this is in no particular order, but the uh, the general plan update, I wanted to to say that I really do support that being uh, done soon rather than done along with the other general plan edits that we'll be doing. We've got, as we all know, the housing element issue, which is also gonna require probably edits to the safety element and the possibly other elements, possibly land use, et cetera. Um, the housing element updates are substantial. They really will change the actual meaning and the actual content of aspects of the general plan, in particular, the housing element. And there will be a lot of discussion about them. This is a completely different thing. The the updates and Stephanie gave a good description of that. And I also kind of wish that something had been in this packet, but it packet item, but it would have been even longer uh, about what that was about, but it is extremely well organized, ready to go. And uh, I believe that we can tackle it in the next meeting and go through those edits. Look at, I don't think we even need to go through them all one by one because they're pretty, they're pretty straightforward. And Stephanie did a good job of describing them, so I won't repeat that. So I think we should go with that and part of the reason for that is because it keeps it separate from the housing element issues. It won't, if we try to do the two in parallel, then we lose the clarity of the fact that the work that that Shelley Hamilton has done along with others and along with RESJ, along with the number of other people. Uh, that work is completely ready to go and it does not change the content of the general plan. It clarifies, it attempts to clarify what was actually meant. And I'm speaking as one of the people along with Shelley and many others who worked on the general plan. None of us meant to say, when we said preserving the community character, we didn't mean to say preserving the racial makeup of the community as it is. That's not what was intended. But historically, that's what that term has meant in a lot of planning documents for a century now. And so that's the idea is just to clarify that without changing the meaning of it as we intended it at all. So I'd like to preserve the clarity of that by just going forward with it. Um, the survey is uh, I think is a good idea. It's something that was a strong priority of PPPSA and RESJ. Uh, the the idea that is proposed in Lorena's work here is to broaden that idea a little bit to a community survey that would ask possibly other questions. We have to keep fairly limited as to our as to our focus so that the survey isn't too long and unwieldy. But while we're doing a scientific survey, as we say, we we can ask questions that are of importance to us to know about the community's feelings. But that should definitely be done by a, by someone who knows how to do that kind of work. And that includes crafting the questions for the survey, designing the survey. It includes administering the survey, which was a big focus of PPPSA, was how is the survey gonna be administered to enough people that that a broad spectrum of people so that there's not a bias in terms of who gets the survey and who has time to to do it and who has online access. And then some analysis of the survey. So we need to, we need to have professional help with that and really do a serious survey. So I think that would, as as Chance mentioned, that is a good first step because it'll give us guidance. The survey will help to guide us in in the priorities on some of the other things. GARE membership uh, is government, a government or an organization that helps governments with racial equity is something that's been talked about for the entire time that RESJ existed. It was always something that staff agreed would be easy to do, but hasn't been done. We should do it because it'll help. GARE can help us with the handbooks and and so forth as we have in in item one as as was was mentioned, and it'll also give us guidance going forward. So that seems like a good first start. Um, pop-ups or other events, um, that's something also that RESJ was beginning to think about before the end of RESJ, uh, to start to think about some positive, fun things. And I think we need to, in in trying to turn this conversation from this painful, difficult thing that it has been into something that would actually continue and work with Fairfax, having some fun in it, it would be a good thing. And events that showcase different ways of life, different points of view, different cultures, different foods, different music, that sounds pretty Fairfax and seems like we've got the energy to do that. So and uh, Gio had said that the volunteers would love to help with that. So there's some resources there. I'd love to see some of them happen. Um, I'm just gonna skip down to the uh, Mobile Crisis Response Team has, from the very beginning, has seemed to me to be one of the, one of the clearest things to focus on. Maybe it ends up being a different format than that, but I I love the idea of of getting the director, the new director of the Mobile Crisis Response Team to speak to us. Um, there has been, as I understand, quite a bit of conversation through the last year among staff uh, through and throughout the county about how to, how to fund and how to make the Mobile Crisis Response Team work better. And uh, I'm not privy to that because I'm not in the staff meetings. But I'd love to get that up to the council level to see where we are with that and what the suggestions might be because that's certainly a resource that the PD likes to use and would use more from everything I've been told. It's been very successful when they have used them, but they just aren't available very much. So let's, let's take a look at what can be done with that. And um, Ross Valley Unite, uh, continuing to work with staff, I think is a great idea. I, it, the model that was set up for RESJ clearly did not work for that year. I'm, I don't think we should try it again in the near future. We'll see what happens in the long term future. But the idea of sitting in a Zoom fishbowl is was was just not bringing out the conversation that we were trying to have and has resulted in a lot of polarization. And we need some healing from that polarization. So I'm looking to this conversation tonight as the beginning of of an era of just trying to take the ideas that are in front of us and move on some of them and see where we can go and and see where that takes us. I want to really thank Damian for his courage in speaking out tonight. And I would uh, invite you, Damian, if you're listening to, you can contact me. You can find my email on the town website. Um, I'd like to be able to talk with you. I'd like to be able to to find out how we can get your comments back to Rico and see what we can find out about the experiences that you've had. And that doesn't have to be a public process, but it needs to be that we need to, we need to hear that. And that, by the way, was one of the recommendations that Ross Valley Unite gave us in preparation for this meeting, was the recommendation that there be some means set up. I don't know what this would be, but they do exist in other towns and cities whereby if somebody has a complaint about police or a question about police and they don't feel comfortable going directly to the police department with that question, that they have someone they can go to that they would be able to feel safe talking with. Some of those complaints, there'll, there'll be all kinds, a whole range of things. But um, find a, find a way and publicize it whereby Damian or someone like Damian can give us actual details so that they can be actionable without putting themselves in in uh, in in jeopardy by doing so, because this is, this is real and we need to deal with it. I do, on the other hand, think we have an amazing, incredible, excellent police department. And I think that uh, that if we get that communication going, it'll be even more excellent. And I'm just gonna finish up one more thing and then I see your hand, Stephanie. I'm almost done. So the last thing was, people have made reference to the safe space. Um, clearly tonight, we crossed a new line. I have never stopped someone while they were speaking. I've been told many times I should have. Uh, we've, as I said earlier, we've received many emails just in the last week saying that that's the main thing we need to do in this town is we need to stop people from speaking when they're making harmful comments. But I also, there are people tonight who were, who felt like they were speakers, who felt like other speakers were disparaging them. So this isn't just a matter of council, RESJ members, it's, it's all over the place. We're in kind of a mess in the town and for my part in it, I apologize. Um, I'm, I'm sorry that it has been so difficult for RESJ to operate. I'm sorry that this whole year, which included a pandemic, wildfires and of numerous police killings around the country, led to a lot of polarization. That was also while Trump was president. It's not too surprising that we're feeling a little on edge, that we're a little polarized right now. But we have a lot of healing to do. And I'm really sorry to see our lovely town in this shape where these kinds of things get said. But it hasn't, this isn't the first time. When I first came to this town, council members sat on opposite ends of the podium because they were in two warring factions. So it hasn't always been, you know, sweetness and light. But right now, we're in a particularly polarized place and I don't know how to get out of it. But I think the safe space as a general concept is something that we really need to look at somehow. Um, that's it for me. That's it for me. Stephanie, I think you had your hand up or if you didn't.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, just quickly in response to, thanks for raising that item that I think we missed on the, how community members can, you know, report issues. And I responded to some of the emails we got in and, and asked about a jurisdictional model for this. And one of the responses I got back was the city of Rochester, New York has an interesting model. It's a local police accountability board made up of community members that people go to. And then, you know, they report back to, to council on it. So I haven't researched it, but wanted to throw that out there for something that we could explore.
Mayor Matt, I asked for one thing. I know Lorena also sits on a board. That is related to some sort of oversight. And I was wondering if she might have some input on whether or not they're intermediary for those kinds of complaints. And I also wanted to just confirm, looking at time, just wanted to confirm with Lorena and Adam as to whether or not, based on the recommendations they laid out in the staff report and all of our comments that we've given, whether they feel comfortable moving forward or if there are additional things that they need from us right now in this moment.
Good question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, thank you. Councilman was confident. It's a good question. I think we got a ton of great feedback from the council and direction from the council here. And, and really good feedback from the public. So I, I think we have more than enough to move the ball forward. I think the only thing that's left on the list that we wanted the council to reaffirm is staff wants you to have the ability to work with chief council members, not at a committee level. We're not, you know, we're not, but we need a sounding board, just as we have some of these other committees where we have the opportunity to talk to council to get their feedback to make sure we're going in the right direction. And then we'll bring information back to the council on those that need council action based on feedback from, from the, from the working group. So that, that's really the only other item I'd like you folks to reaffirm. And, and if there's a discussion, there's a discussion that we would like to be able to work with two council members going forward.
And I think you asked that it be Councilmember Cacciano and Mayor Ackerman, correct? I mean, I'm fine with that. I think, I think some of the things will have to come back to council for sure. I mean, I think there was something in the staff report about just running with the ball, not those terms. But I think it's probably more realistic to think that some things will have to come back.
Okay, can I just toss something out? And, you know, just, I would be remiss not to. So I, I, I'd be interested in being one of those council members just because it could be a place where a change could be a relief or could be useful or could give me a chance to, to step into some of this work as well. Completely understand if we want to keep the continuity, which really, truly I do. But I do want to put my, my name in there if we're going to move into a new phase as I may have something new to bring to it. So that would be obviously at the will of the council or not.
So Renee, you have listened either live or afterwards to most of the RESJ meetings. Is that correct? So you're, yeah, okay.
I do, this is not my intention to replace someone for lack of doing a good job.
No.
This is just, if this is a natural place for a change, I, I would, I would put myself forward.
That wasn't even what I was thinking. I was just confirming that publicly, if nothing else, just to, to say that you are, you were, you're aware of, of the same things that, for example, I would be aware of.
Very aware.
Probably more. So for myself, I would be, I would be happy to serve on that group of two for however long or whatever it is, but I would, I would be quite fine with turning my role over to Renee. Chance, I'll let you speak to that as well.
I, I feel the same way, Mayor. Whatever, whatever pleases the council, but I'm also, I'm happy to continue to work on it or pass the baton.
Well, I would be very happy to nominate Chance and Renee to take the next two person. It's, it's been Stephanie and myself. It's been Chance and myself. Now it would be Chance and Renee. Eventually it'll get around to all of us. So that would be fine with me if anybody else has further comments or nominations for that.
I'll make the motion to appoint Chance, Councilmember Cacciano and Councilmember Goddard to that working, what do we call it? Ad hoc committee? Ad hoc working group.
I think that's what Adam was calling a working group, but ad hoc, yes.
I'll second.
I learned the term. Second from Vice Mayor Hellman. And Adam, do we need a vote on that or, or Michelle, do we need a vote or have we just said what you needed to hear?
This is Janet. I would appreciate a vote.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
All right, Michelle, would you please take a roll call on that, on that motion?
Yes, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes, and with thanks to everyone.
Councilmember Cacciano.
Yes, and ditto that.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes. Sorry.
Mayor Ackerman.
Yes, and thank you, Renee and Chance. And all of you. This was been a, was a challenging lot of information to digest. Incredible thanks to staff and especially Lorena for pulling all that together for us in such an incredibly well-organized fashion. And thanks to all of us for getting through it and making some sense, moving the ball forward a couple of more steps.
And Mayor, if I could just add more thanks to that, I just wanted to thank you and Vice Mayor Hellman for your work with the RESJ and, and the RESJ, former RESJ members as well. Because I think a lot of the stuff we did see in this list were early designs and discussions that occurred in the RESJ over those 13 months that they had met. So I just wanna thank you all.
We didn't invent this stuff. And also thanks to a lot of other jurisdictions that Lorena looked at to see what they were doing. So this is, this is a big project way beyond Fairfax and we're doing our step on it tonight. Okay, with that, it is past 10:30. I think that it would be a good time for a break, but then think about it after the break. Unless people would like to do it before the break, we need to do the 10 o'clock reevaluation of, of where we are. Let's do it before the break so that people, if we do decide that we can't get to everything, that people can.
I would recommend that the skate park results get continued. That's number 11, especially Maria Bear can't be here. I know Camille and Jonathan are here, but it, it might be nicer to wait because we have a couple of more items that are sort of, well, one in particular that's very large. So I would, I would make a motion to continue item 11.
Let me ask Adam, how would that be for, for staff?
I, I think that's fine. I, I think Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Cacciano and I have been working as the working group on this. I don't believe there's urgency to it. I know that Parks Committee worked hard in reviewing the survey and staff has worked hard, but it is 20 to 11. And as Councilmember Coler just mentioned, we, we do have two more items in front of it. So I would recommend moving it, but I'll defer to Vice Mayor Hellman.
I, I'm okay with that. Thank you all. Who wants to make the motion?
I think I made it.
All right, I'll, I'll take the roll call. But Councilmember Cacciano, this is about continuing item 11.
Great, yeah, yes, thanks.
Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And for myself, yes. Okay. Let's take a break. It's 10:40. How about if we give ourselves until 10:50 and we'll be refreshed and reinvigorated and ready to tackle two more items?
I think you're on mute, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're reconvening and we will now go on with, we actually have, I'm afraid we actually have, no, it is three more items, yes. Because we just continued the skate park too. Okay, so the next item will be what was item number six. It was on the consent calendar and we'll get to that now while Chief Taboranza is still on the line. So this will be regarding the purchasing of two police vehicles. And can we get a staff report to begin that? Adam, would you be giving that or Chief Taboranza?
I'll have Chief, I'll have the chief give a very brief report. I don't think, I don't think there's much of a report. At this hour, it's probably best if we just move quickly to questions. But if you'd like a quick update from the chief.
Just for the public on what the item is. Yeah, it's pretty brief, yeah.
Hello. Okay, so the recommendation is pretty much to allow the town manager to purchase an outfit to police vehicles for an amount not to exceed $119,000 and declare one of those town vehicles as surplus vehicle. That's the recommendation of the staff report.
I think it's $130,000 is the recommendation. In this staff report, you have some overage just in case.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. I'm looking at.
And I think you might just briefly want to say what the vehicles are and why you're wanting two vehicles, maybe something like that, really brief.
Okay, so to go back, generally, we try to replace vehicles in a, as our age, as our fleet ages, in past years, we have offset the purchase of vehicles and staggered it with the replacement of older costly vehicles. And this was done to spread the cost of vehicle purchases over years instead of a one-time large sum purchase. We've tried to also lease vehicles in the past instead to, to spread the cost over time. But since 2018, due to the economy and more recently COVID-related issues, we have not placed, purchased any vehicles. So the, the last police vehicle purchase was in 2018 and that was for a utility vehicle. The, the recommendation here is to authorize a town manager to purchase an outfit to police vehicles for an amount not to exceed $130,000 and declare one of those town vehicles as a surplus. And in, in this 130 is to be appropriated from the Field Equipment Vehicle Replacement Fund, 03923921, as stated in the staff report. And it's not part of the police budget. And the reason being is our fleet is aging and depleting. And we currently have one that is already out and its deadline is not safe. Patrol vehicles, we have five and currently I'm operating on two with, with three of those that are away for mechanical services. One of them is away right now to be also serviced for mechanical issues. So it's, it's not safe right now where we are. We are behind in vehicles and this is something that can't wait. I, I agree with the staff report and I believe this is a safety issue that we need to proceed with.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I can just add, just to be very specific. These are two vehicles that are 2010 and 2013. So, you know, the industry standard is way past their prime. Under normal circumstances, you would be retiring these cars and surplusing them every three to five years. In larger cities, those vehicles, because they're still serviceable, would go to like a planning department for their planners when they go out into the field, their building inspectors that go out into the field, park and rec staff as they're going to meetings and/or programs. But these vehicles are way past their prime. So one of them is being recommended to be surplus and the other is being recommended to continue to stay as a usable vehicle for non-police-related activity.
Okay, so to, thank you for all that and, and that was in the staff report. That was all pretty clear. Just to cut to the quick in the interest of time, what I believe, maybe I'm mistaken, but what I believe is the only real issue with this is not the idea that the vehicles need to be replaced or the designation of one of them as surplus. Unless there are comments about that, I think that's all accepted as, as staff's recommendation. But the question is, as, as I'm hearing, is the question of whether they could be electric vehicles. The, it wasn't mentioned in that report, but the, what the staff report says is that they would be, the proposal is for them to be hybrid. As I understand it, that's not plug-in hybrid, but maybe I'm wrong about that. But the, the question is whether we could possibly move toward purchasing electric vehicles or if not, then at least be ready to the next time we purchase vehicles. So that's why I think this was pulled. Maybe I'm wrong about that. So if there are any other questions from, from council members or clarifications about what the issue is, then we should go to public comment on it and then we can discuss it. But we really need to, to act on this and, and then the hour is getting late. So Chance, I think you have your hand up first.
Yeah, I just want to confirm really quickly that, so we have three cars out on maintenance. And Rico, the, what you're saying is, we, we actually don't have the, like if we kicked this off, you know, and, and did some planning study to look into infrastructure that's needed for charging stations and what the timeline would be for that and the financing for that, and then figuring out what the electric vehicles are. Like we, we don't have necessarily the time to accommodate that new schedule given that we have so few cars that we're able to use for patrols. Is that, am I, I'm trying to like map out timeframes based on asks from the community and what the asks are from PD. So I just want clarity there.
Right, that's correct. To make it even plainer, I'm not opposed to in the future going into an, an all-electric vehicle fleet. That's not the question there. I'm fully supportive of that. That's the question. The thing is here is we don't have the time. Right now, as it stands, we're way behind in our, in our vehicle retention and replacement. We're working with limping around here, trying to, trying to provide the services we need given all the demands of not just calls for service, but 911 calls for service, the potential and to be available for mass evacuations for, you know, the threat of weather-related type evacuations. In addition to the demands and needs of certain communities that want extra patrol in their certain areas, we, we don't have the resources available now. I mean, next year, I want to budget for two more. And if, if next year, maybe we can budget for all electric, given the, the charging components and everything else, great. But right now, at this time, there's, we can't stall. You know, this is a safety issue. We need vehicles now. And, and this has been echoed by Chief Moore back in 2018, 2019 and 2020. Now it's 2021 going to 2022. And if, if we go on as far as timeline here, let's say if it were approved today, it still takes about six months to get these cars ordered, outfitted and made sure that it's, it's working properly with our radios and communications along with the MDTs and the modems that go in there. It has to be properly safe to be operated and to be able to transport safely and also to service the town before we can get it out on the street. So just given that alone right there, there's already a, a built-in delay and we, we need it today.
Can I just clarify, Chief Taboranza, before we go to public comment? I've asked you about this prior and I don't think it was really necessarily, I know you told me that if we approve these cars, you could have them pretty much within a week, these two cars. But it's not just a timing issue from what I understand. You've checked with the Fremont Police Chief, those Tesla vehicle, and these are Teslas. You can't get a Nissan Leaf to do police work. Is, they're not used for regular police. they're not used for regular police work and the technology is changing so much and coming down in price. And we hope that in the near future, such fleets, E fleets would be available to do police work, regular police work. So, I mean, I think we're just getting a little off track with the idea, I mean, yes, we would have to have dedicated chargers and all that, I don't think that is the biggest stumbling block. I think the biggest stumbling block, from what you've explained to me, is more about these cars are not available right now for police work. And the last time I checked on Teslas, which I have a hard time seeing Fairfax with Tesla police vehicles, that would be gentrification. But um, they're looking out for most models of sometime next year, even being able to deliver to a regular person, not necessarily to police. Could you just clarify that real quick before we go out to public comment?
Yes, that's correct, uh, these vehicles, they have to meet a, a certain standard for patrol use. And all our cars that are for patrol use in Fairfax are, are limited, so in a big agency, right, like Fremont, yes, they may be able to purchase an all-electric Tesla, two of them, right? But they also have a large fleet of hybrid vehicles that are in use, and a even larger fleet of gas-operated uh, pursuit-rated Title thirteen compliant patrol cars at their dispense and available. And any given time, our, our fleet of five is always down one, two or three, and, and you can see that now today. So we don't have that large fleet that you can jeopardize a patrol functioning vehicle that needs to meet all these requirements, carry all the equipment, uh, the, the extra cages and that electronic components within this car. Uh, and also, you have to consider that we're recycling a lot of these components from one car to the other. So that's also another part that's not tested, embedded on a fully electric car right now. There's a lot of things that have to be in these cars and they have to be multi-use and operational for a fleet like ours, because we're, we're full service in these cars. We don't have, you know, this fleet of hybrids, this fleet of electrics, and then the whole gas fleet of patrol vehicles that are gas-operated that are, you know, needed for daily use. Day shift comes in and use them. They get off swing shift, comes in the same car and uses them. They get off graveyard, then uses the same car and it repeats day in and day out. We only have this limited fleet without these extra vehicles here, and currently that fleet is limping along.
Thank you.
So, just to elaborate just a moment on Barbara's question, the, the, this is a question, I believe, for, for you, Chief Tabaranza. The limitations right now are, Barbara mentioned one that I was definitely aware of, because I heard about it from, from other staff, that one issue is we don't have the charging stations installed, we would have to in fact decide what charging stations we, we needed, whether we need a level two or level three uh, so that you could charge it and use it in the next shift. But another issue you're saying is just the availability of the cars, that they are, you feel like they aren't available in, in a timely manner right now, you couldn't order them and get them quickly. And maybe there are not, there's not a big selection of them available now, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, those two, those two points are, that is true and that's accurate. But what I was mostly trying to say here too is that uh, i- it doesn't compare, it's not apples to apples with the current proven patrol vehicles that we rely on now. Uh, when I was reviewing briefly the Fremont report about their reports, I know that the current existing MDTs, the docks, the computers that go right in front there that we need to provide the service that we do for this community, actually cannot be installed in that car. So, so if we even look into that type of vehicle now, not only are we worrying about the delay, we're worrying about not having the available tools we currently have in our current cars to match this electric vehicle, not even considering the electric drain or not being able to fully charge this car as it's going to be used every shift, day in and day out, because it's just going to go right in the service. Uh, we don't know how long these batteries will last, how long we can charge them. What is the opportunity for us to charge them at any given day, given our current fleet, if we're down to, to two or three cars out of five? Uh, it's just a big risk to go at this time, we need more time to research it, we need more time to see what equipment we can put in there and if it'll serve the purposes in a Fairfax fleet, given that our Fairfax patrol cars are full service and have all the equipment. We don't have the luxury of having multiple officers, ten, fifteen, twenty officers, that if we need to transport one car, I'm sorry, this Tesla doesn't fit. You know, or we, we can't afford that, not having that availability, because at any given time, we'll only have two officers. Now, we need to have both of those cars ready to go. And with the full equipment, with the full use. Uh, in addition to that, uh, ergonomics, I didn't, I forgot to mention that earlier. Uh, there's a lot of proven, and I'm sure Janet can speak of it, uh, you know, claims with certain cars being ergonomically unsafe, you know, for the officers, leading to future claims of disability, you know, back pain, things like that. As these officers are sitting in there, day in, day out, going in and out of these cars, these explorers that are hybrids that we're going to get for the first time, you know, they are higher in elevation, so the entrance and the exit are uh, are safer for officers to use. I mean, that's a, that's a one item that's, that goes unmentioned most of the time is the lower the car or the way it's built also comes into play when it's daily driven and used, along with having all the equipment on top of you, like thirty pounds of weight, given all your equipment and your, and your vest. So those are a couple of things, we still need time to research and uh, look into other departments that have similar types of needs to the patrol cars we need here in Fairfax and to see how they're vetting these cars and if it's something we need here. And, and that's in addition to charging stations being available in our courtyard, if that's, you know, something we need to consider, it just needs more time.
Thank you, and I'd have to say that as far as getting in and out of the car and the ergonomics of it, I would not recommend a Tesla. But that's, I've barely ever driven one, but I did not like how you have to practically get on the ground to get into it. Okay, let's go to public comment and try to resolve this question quickly. Um, Michelle, would you open up public comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you have a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. I see one hand, and that is Walt Vernon, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Uh, I'm almost embarrassed to make a comment of any length at this time of night, but I, I feel impelled. You know, I, I, the, the Fremont experiment was a pilot using a twenty fourteen automobile. Uh, it, it proved itself in many respects, including range and many of the concerns that have been, have been listed. I think a lot of the um, objections that have been raised here are really unfounded. There are lots of smaller uh, police departments around the country that are successfully using EV and transitioned to electric vehicle flight. But, but I'm, I, I don't want to debate, I suppose, what is, I can tell already a foregone conclusion. What I will say, I, I recognize the urgency of the situation and I certainly respect the position of our officers, and I don't want to stand in the way of public service. I will say that there's another emergency. Uh, the IPCC is, has declared code red for humanity. Um, this town has declared a climate emergency. This town has declared that it will be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. This town approved a climate action plan a few months ago that said its fleet will be all-electric by twenty thirty. So uh, maybe it's okay to punt on this one. Um, but, but I would also like to just offer, this has never been um, a, a conversation with the Climate Action Committee for the town. And we would really like to think of ourselves as allies of the town council and the town staff. And we would really appreciate being able to work with uh, the police department in the future and look at options and see uh, if we can find more environmentally preferable ways to um, to serve the needs. So um, that's enough, and I thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Walt.
The next speaker is Silver. Silver, you're unmuted now.
You need to unmute yourself, Silver, and then we'll be able to hear you.
Gotcha.
Hi, Silver.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I understand the police department is requesting a uh, new gas-powered cars, but I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a, you know, actually a definition of insanity, uh, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And uh, currently, I'm sure you're aware that we have this major oil spill down in Southern California, and there's miles of, of black blotched, botched beaches and dead birds and, and dead fish, uh, you know, covered in oil and it's, and they continue to wash up on the shore and uh, environmentally, it's, it's a nightmare. And, but, but on a positive note, like, we, we have a choice, you know, like, we can choose to buy electric vehicles. You know, or we can continue to buy gas-powered cars. And it, it would really be fantastic, you know, fantastic if, if uh, Fairfax was uh, one of the first cities in Marin to have electric cars for their police department, so uh, that's my two cents and thank you very much.
Thank you, Silver.
The next speaker is David Haskell, followed by Jody Timms. David, you're unmuted now. Might need to unmute.
Unmute yourself.
Much. There we go, now I'm good. Uh, smile if you hear me. I really respect what Walt said. Uh, we're in a code-red situation with the climate, we have a climate emergency. And uh, just a little story. In New Zealand, I did a zero-waste audit for the Department of Conservation and, and went through their whole department. And I came back with the, the analysis that they had hundreds of thousands of pounds of pollution of garbage. And they said, no, we don't. And I said, yes, you do, it's coming out of the tailpipe of your car. And I would imagine, in terms of our carbon emissions in the city, a town of Fairfax, that the vast majority is tailpipe emissions. Every gallon of gas is twenty-two pounds of pollutants. And uh, multiply that by how many gallons your police force use. And I would suggest that that is the largest polluter perhaps in our whole town, as, as an organization. Uh, so it is time to rethink. I heard the chief and I heard, I understand that this has been a, a crisis situation since two thousand and eighteen. Oh, okay, so it's two thousand nineteen, two thousand, maybe it could go another year and still be continued. So I don't know, the urgency to solve the problem, I do respect that the chief has a job to do and, and public to protect, but so do you. And I believe that we have a, a chance to take a breath, let's look at this. And uh, I think that we can have a solution set here that's going to be satisfactory to us. Uh, thank you for discussing this, and I strongly support the uh, zero emissions in this town, and the only way to do that is to get rid of the worst polluter in the whole group, so thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, David.
Uh, the next speaker is Jody Timms, and you are unmuted now.
I think I'm up, good evening, council members, uh, Jody Timms. Um, I guess I just want to express my frustration about this subject. I, I certainly hear um, what Rico has said. We passed a climate emergency resolution two and a half years ago and have been asking that the town and the community take climate change seriously. We, uh, you know, as a, as a planet are nowhere near where we need to be. The urgency is to get going and stop kicking the can down the road. And I, I, I really don't believe that the, that the research has been done, I mean Rico is saying that, I, I know that there's a lot of competing needs, but we have to get on to this issue of stopping the pollution that we keep pouring into our environment. We, we, uh, you know, the report I was reading this morning said our collective ambition needs to increase more than five-fold. And this country uh, is, is polluting at a rate way, way beyond what it should be, so I don't think the research has been done, I don't think it's nearly as complicated as people are making. I do think Teslas are an option, uh, and shouldn't be tossed out because of potentially preconceived ideas. I think we need to go into this with an open mind and we need to get going on it and stop stalling um, the actions that need to, that need to get done. So, uh, you know, obviously my frustration is broader than just what's going on in this town. But I don't think people, either they don't really understand or believe the science, or they keep believing that we have time. We can't negotiate and compromise when it comes to drought. We can't say, you know, sorry, uh, I know we've been out of water a long time, but nature, please just start raining, because, you know, we've had enough already. It's not like that. These are not things that we can keep putting off and putting off and putting off. And so, I, I, I deplore the council and the staff to take these issues seriously and do the research and do the investigation and take the actions that we need, because we are in trouble. Uh, and if you're not sure about that, just check into COP twenty-six uh, coming up right around the corner that will um, hopefully convince people of the seriousness of the situation that we're in. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Judy.
Next speaker is Tunafish Salin, you're unmuted now.
Howdy, folks.
Yeah.
You know, despite all of our accomplishments and whatever we think we know, we pretty much owe our existence to a small layer of topsoil and the fact that it rains. And other than that, we have all kinds of magnetizations and things that we do. You know, I think it is an issue in terms of economics with Rico and the cars and Teslas and everything else. And we don't seem to have an unlimited budget in Fairfax, so unless we can figure out how to have a bake sale or do something else to really support some electrics, I think there's some thought that needs to go into it in the economics. And I'd also like to put out, what about electric bicycles too? I mean, you know, there's considerations in terms of safety and balance and, you know, how much people are actually used to riding, but you know, it might be tough to haul somebody up to the civic center to book them into a jail on an electric bicycle, but they might be handy for things around town. Um, I don't know if electric bicycles have been looked into at all. And we do have some serious environmental problems to look at and deal with and take care of, and hopefully we have the will, the political will and the, you know, personal will. Um, starting with ourselves, it's like, you know, how few of us look into our trash cans and consider it's like where it's all coming from and where it's all going. And, you know, it starts with us, every mile we drive, everything that we throw away in our trash cans came from a once-living environment, air, water and soil. What's left, where all of that stuff came from. We got work, work to do, and it's all an adventure, huh? You know, just by, you know, we could do everything completely right, take care of everybody, greeny-green. And no matter what we do, there's still going to be a stray comet that comes through and hits and changes everything every now and then, so go for it, do our best, man, we don't know what tomorrow's going to hold and this might be our last breath, you know? Let's go for it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, dear.
I do not see any other raised hands if you want to close the public comment.
Close public comment, and um, with regard to electric bikes, we have talked about that, and I'm, I'm convinced that it really doesn't fit in with what the police department in this small town needs. I won't go into details, but for myself, I don't need to have that conversation tonight. So with regard to the cars, the question, I, I would like to say, I'll just start out and say that if we, if we, because of the urgency of the situation and because of the fact that we aren't really prepared yet to make this move to electrics. that we aren't really prepared yet to make this move to electrics, that we don't make this move with this purchase of these two vehicles, that I would really like to plea with our new staff. And we now have a public works director. Well, we, it's interim, but we will have a permanent public works director. That makes a huge difference. And things get researched. It's amazing, the public works director that we have now. He is amazing. And if he were around for a while, he could do a lot of this research and get the charging stations in and all of that. I would just like to plea that we have this ready so that the next time we need to purchase a town vehicle, that we can, we don't have a reason that we don't do it electric because we aren't ready or we haven't gotten ready for it. And I appreciate the overwhelming number of things that have faced staff and police for a long time in this town. I really appreciate that because I feel some of that myself being on council and being mayor. It's just, there's so much flying at us. But I understand the frustration that was expressed by some of the commenters at this. We've had this discussion before. We bought a parking enforcement vehicle which could so easily have been electric and we didn't buy an electric. And I still don't know how that happened, but I'd like to see us get ready for this decision the next time so that we can really do it. That's my comment on it. Oh, I'm sorry. I started out traditionally, I go last, but I just wanted to say that because I am pretty involved with this issue as well. Chance, you've got your hand up. I see.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to thank the commenters. I hope, I understand the frustration totally. And I also recognize that, you know, there are processes that we're now unearthing, right? I, I think it was clear from this discussion earlier that Rico is not opposed to EV fleet. I know there are rebates that TAM offers for EV fleet as well as EV infrastructure. I'm hoping that this could be, Jonathan can put this into the, the process map or the pipeline. And I think now the Climate Action Committee members that are tuned into this know that Rico's probably going to come back for and ask for other vehicles in the not too distant future as we upgrade more vehicles and retire the ones that are definitely in need of retiring. And I think Rico knows that there's this, we have this climate emergency resolution. We have this newly updated climate action plan. So I, I think this is a moment where everybody's sort of checked in with each other and has a sense of this, the path forward. But I don't think tonight that there's any indication that we can just kind of kick this, you know, and not decide on this tonight. And I, I let everybody speak, but I'm also happy to make a motion whenever as well.
Renee?
Um, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not going to support jumping into purchasing two hybrid vehicles tonight. I had asked that it be continued only because I do think there's already been done. Did everything that shared, the resources that Walt shared through Jody, read all the articles I could. The information is coming fast and furious where I understand and I absolutely respect and no doubt cast on what the chief has shared with us. But I don't feel in all good conscience that I can support that tonight. So that's where I stand. I would request that it come back with enough research in two weeks that we can make a more informed decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. I mean, Renee. Barbara?
Yeah, well, I want to thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Cutrano for, I think, sort of both being climate advocates, zealots, which I admire. I am too, in a different way. But also listening to what the chief had to say and the urgency of the matter. And also understanding that police vehicles are not the same as when we buy our own vehicles. And I also want to point out, since my being on the council, I don't believe we've ever ordered police hybrid vehicles in the past. So I think this is a step up and I think we can commit to looking into this. But I think our town manager reminded us earlier that the technology is changing. And I think some of the things that Chief Tavaraanza said was there are issues with using, we don't have 50 police vehicle cars and there are issues with pursuits that because we're a small town and we only have a few police, they're doing a lot of things that may require jumping out of the car really fast, et cetera. I also want to just mention one thing. Chief Tavaraanza is so approachable and we all know him as Rico. But when Chief Moore was here, I don't believe anyone called Chief Moore and Chris. I know I didn't. And I think we should respect our police chief and call him Chief Tavaraanza. I also don't appreciate that one of the commenters made sort of a disparaging comment that he hadn't done research. He's been in this job as chief for just a few months. He's trying to do a lot and cover a lot of shifts and hired a new police person at this time. I completely support moving forward with these vehicles. I think we should take time to do research and make sure that if we can on the next vehicles, we can purchase E. But they may not be ready for police work for a very small town force where we don't have the luxury of maybe picking a different car when we have to go out. So I can, I'm ready to make a motion as well. But Councilmember Cutrano, after we hear from Vice Mayor Hellman, I would defer to you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
I would like to know if we can learn more in two weeks or if that's just a futile exercise. I don't know if anybody can answer that or not, but I'm in support of Councilmember Goddard's request.
So Chief Tavaraanza, if it's, I heard you say, maybe I was mistaken, but I thought I heard you say that it might take months for the delivery of these hybrids and getting it fitted and ready to actually run. So that would give us that much time if they were electrics and they were purchased today and they could be delivered in the same amount of time, we would have time to put the charging stations in.
What is that based on? How do you, what?
Can, can I interrupt? Chief Tavaraanza, you told me that these cars can be delivered in a week. Not, I think you said the electric vehicles are things that would take a long time. And even I checked on Teslas. Could you clarify that before we go into a long discussion on this?
The availability of the Teslas specifically won't be until next year based on these models, based on my research and just, you can just do an online search.
Before you go on, I believe you told me when I asked you this question that these particular vehicles we can have in a week. Is that correct or within two?
The outfitter can get the vehicles because the vehicles are ready from the manufacturer as soon as I call them this week. If we burn this, however, it still needs to be delivered to the outfitter. We need to get our parts from the old cars that we're able to recycle and move into the new cars delivered over there. An outfitter has to put it in their schedule to get things going and get this car ready and tested and be to the specs of our, to our stuff in our needs here in Marin and Fairfax County. I mean Fairfax Police Department because we're in a different radio system than some other ones. So all our equipment has to match and work together. So your question about getting these cars within a week, that's true. But that's from the outfitter getting it from the manufacturer. It still takes a long time and it could take upward to six months. And that's what we've experienced in the past, sometimes to get these in working order, ready for the street and on patrol. But that's after the outfitter had had time to get everything put together.
Okay, so any car that we order, let's say we ordered Teslas, which are not available right now, at least till probably spring of next year, if not longer. Then whatever happens, any car that we order needs an outfitter. And we don't know about outfitting those kind of vehicles, but assuming they could be outfitted, then there will be an additional lag of perhaps months, the same thing you're talking about now. Is that correct?
In addition to the waiting period of the Teslas, yes. And also we would have to see if our current outfitter that we've been using can even work on the Teslas. And if not, we would need time to find an outfitter that can do that and then work with them.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question, please?
Sure.
So let's say instead of a Tesla, let's say, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the whole, the framework here as I think other council members are. Let's say that we were, that you were looking at a GM car, Chevy Bolt EUV, which is the newest model of the Bolt that's a little larger than the regular Bolt. That is, and let's say, I believe that it's available right now, today. I mean, certainly we bought a Bolt and when we did, it was, it was right there. There wasn't any delay in delivering it. So let's say that there were a car like that that would be roomy enough, easy to get in and out of, have a 300 mile range and, and it was available right now. Then that could go to the outfitter. The outfitter would then, I'm wondering whether there's any problem with the outfitter outfitting that. It seems like, it looks like a pretty normal car to me on the dashboard. And so I would, I don't know what constraints the outfitters have, but as far as putting the radio in, I know there's a lot of wiring they have to put through them. I'm sure the outfitters prefer, outfitters prefer the cars they're familiar with because they know how to get into them and do all that. But let's say that you could get a car today that would do the work for you and got it to the outfitter in the same amount of time, within, within a week, then would that, would that set your schedule back? You would, we would presumably be able to get chargers installed and by the time you got them back from the outfitter. So is the problem there just that those, that the other car? Because every automaker on the planet now is selling an electric car. There are a lot of them out there available. There are 20, 30, 40 different electric cars that you can, that you can go and purchase if you look around. So the question would be, is there just none, no other one besides the Tesla that is certified? Or is, or what, what is the? I'm just trying to understand where the blockage lies in this whole picture that we're trying to, we're trying to put together here. And whether it'll be any different next year.
Well, there's a lot right there that you've mentioned. In a perfect world, it would line up the way you'd like it, right? And there's an availability that's available. And also that it means the standards of being Title 13 compliant, pursuit rated. I'll give you an example of one thing that can actually hold up something like that. And again, I'm not familiar with the vehicle you're, you're putting forward, but I know that the cars that I'm putting forward today meets all those expectations. So there's a work there that has to be done in order to meet all those requirements in the first place, right? But one holdup in these Torres's that we've made into patrol compliant, pursuit rated, Title 13 patrol cars, if you remove the spare full tire that's in the back, it's no longer meeting those requirements. So that's one holdup on some of these cars. Now, let alone look into a, an electric vehicle. I understand many manufacturers have a wide range of electric vehicles now. But there's a lot of work going all the way from the beginning of seeing what is pursuit rated? What is Title 13 compliant? What is ergonomically sound? What is available for the equipment we have? What's the availability? Can we get it to a manufact, can we get it from a manufacturer into an outfitter in a certain amount of time? There's a research show that we can use it for our needs here in town. Not the freeway use, but hills and daily use and, and used by patrol officers day in and day out. The often need for it to be charged. When we can get these charging stations in and what space are we going to designate for us in order to make sure we're able to charge them and use them for all shifts and have it available and not risk the ability for one not to be ready to go in the event of a, a big emergency or mass evacuation? Those things all have to be figured out and that's going to take more than two weeks. I mean, currently I'm here today, working and taking a sip from, of water here from Renee's cup, if you remember this cup, Renee. And I'm in quarantine and I actually tested positive for COVID and I'm doing this from home. So you're telling me you need this work in a week or two? You know, I'm, I'm here today in quarantine. So there's a lot of work on top of every other demand you have for us and you have limited staff. It's going to take way more than two weeks.
Can I just interrupt? I think we're kind of going down a rabbit hole.
Barbara, I have something to say and I, it might help here. I was going to say, first of all, chief, I'm so sorry to hear that you're not well. But please take care. Here's what I was going to suggest. So I, I hear, I, I hear that this is, this is far more complicated and to put something up in two weeks is not realistic. I, I get it. But I would request that we go forward with creating something in writing, some kind of a policy that lays out how it is we're going to deal with the acquisition of our police fleet going forward. It is the part of our fleet that changes most often. In fact, the rest of our fleet almost never changes. So let's, um, let's get a plan going forward so that we make sure that this doesn't, like, like, like the mayor was saying, doesn't sneak up on us and that we're committed to making that happen. So I, I, I'm sorry that I was being unreasonable. I share the frustration of many members of the public, but I also understand the reality. And I want to make sure that you can do the job that you do so well. So that, that's what I would request though, is that we see it in writing. It, it, it follows along the lines of what is in our cap by 2030 and we can do it much sooner. But that's what I would request.
And sure, I mean, that's Councilmember Goddard, I'm sorry to interrupt there. That's all I'm suggesting. I said it earlier, I don't oppose an electric fleet. I wish we can today. These things take time and we need to get it right, especially if we're going to spend the money, right? Because if we get a charging station for a Bolt, then next year we get a Tesla, what are we going to do with the, you know, we need some interchangeable parts here that we can plan properly and use and be able to have available for the future. I have Jonathan Goldman here now who's doing a lot of work. So we can work together while he's here with us. All I ask for is that we get cars now because we need this resource today. And after this, we can go out with a plan and get to our, our planned electric vehicle fleet by 2030. That's all I'm asking for.
Chief Rico, first of all, I would like to say I knew about your situation and I was holding it confidential. Thanks for sharing it with us and thanks for working when I know you're in quarantine and you don't sound like you feel good. I would like to make a motion that we go forward to authorize the town manager to purchase and outfit two police vehicles for an amount not to exceed $130,000 and declare one town vehicle a surplus and appropriate $130,000 from the Field Equipment Vehicle Replacement Fund, 03-923-921 for this purchase.
Maybe a second.
Chance, you did have your hand up.
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay. So you're seconding it?
Yeah.
You're polite. Sorry.
I'll take the roll call. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes as well. And that's with the understanding, I, I think Renee put it very well. I was trying to say it earlier, but as always, Renee is so much more eloquent and brief that we just, I really would like to see us and I am, I would so like to, to work on this with you. I've seen a lot of electric vehicles. I've got one you can drive. I've, there's, there are many resources around. And I would just like us to be ready a, a year from now or, or whenever it is that we're next purchasing a vehicle to really have looked at every possibility. Maybe it won't work, but really look at all the possibilities. And I certainly appreciate that that hasn't been done for a variety of reasons, including the fact that they weren't there. This is a very fast moving field and there may be things there a year from now that aren't even there today. But let's just try to make that commitment as a town to really see if we can do this next time. Thank you and I hope you recover swiftly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go better.
Go to bed.
Okay, I suspect that's probably where the chief has. Okay, I, I suspect that's probably where the chief is heading. Okay, so number 10, item 10, um, which is the, for the water, proposed water conservation program. And can we begin with a staff report on that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, point of order, did you want to waive the 1130 rule?
Um, yes, I would propose to do that. I think we need to, we've got now items 10 and 13. 13 should be fairly quick, so we've got one discussion item ahead of us. I, I propose we go forward with it. What do you all think? Can we do it?
You know, we could do it, but, and I know we don't have another time to do it, but th- this is a really important item that we get the opportunity to really talk. So I, I feel terrible that it's quarter to 12.
So do I. I just don't know when else it's going to happen because we've, we already had some kind of agendas already looking like they were there for the next meetings. And now we've put two more things into them, so.
Well.
Yeah, I. And there's, there's a, of course, an urgency around water conservation. We, you know, we need to figure out what we're going to do. It may not be what this proposal is, but we need to at least decide what we're doing so that we can, so that the, the, something can move forward, so. Um, what's this, I'm, I'm going to take a poll. Councilmember Catrano, do you think we should consider? I, I'd say we should consider item 13. It's pretty quick, but item 10, do we do it tonight or do we, is it too late? Yes or no? I'm going to just go around the, get a poll here.
I'll just go, um, I know that we have folks on the line who want to speak to it, but I also know that there may be other folks who want to speak to it who went to bed. And so I think it's important. And maybe what we could do is, well, I'm, I'm gonna, I know it, it's going to change everything, but I really suggest that we continue it because it really is, it's a quarter to midnight. And we tend to keep doing these really important things so late. And there, there are folks that I can see that I know are very invested in this, but there are others from the broader community who aren't on. And not everybody's as tough as us or as ridiculous as us to stay up so late. That's my vote, whatever it is.
I, I mean, I feel as though we're going to potentially have to schedule a special meeting for a couple of big items that we are just not going to get to on these regular agenda nights. So, um, and I think this absolutely deserves, uh, time and fleshing out. And we're going to have to do some con- conversing about it to come to a good conclusion. So I would not support bringing it forward tonight with all apologies to it's in the four folks that have worked so hard on this that are on this call, three.
Okay, so. I feel, uh, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, I feel similarly in terms of the, the need to really walk through it and talk about it. And, um, feeling like it's like, can't even, you know, I know the recommendation is to, um, you know, there's like, you know, negotiate and return to council for consideration of approval, but I feel like we haven't, don't even have the time to really flesh anything out to even, you know, get something, direct staff, you know, at this point. So I, I'd have to agree with, um, Councilmember Goddard about setting aside time specifically for, to just get to this stuff sooner.
All right. So in my polling so far, we have three saying continue it. I've, I still lean toward keeping it, but we're already, we've already got three votes. Um, so Stephanie, if you want to say anything, go for it, but it sounds like.
It's rather moot as you are implying.
Why don't we, why don't you mayor work with, um, the town manager to see if we can do a special meeting for a couple of these things? I mean, it's, I, actually our next meeting is a special meeting, but we, the, the goal of doing those was we were supposed to do one or two items. And now they become everything. So maybe you can talk to him about something in the future. And I apologize to the folks who have stayed on and really care about this. And I know, um, but I just don't think it's the right time.
Okay, so I will work with the town manager on that, on that question. Um, so that leaves us then with item 13, yes.
Mayor, I, I do see Laura Vernon's hand up and I would, I would just leave to you whether you would like to call on her since she was one of the presenters. She has a presentation.
I would be inclined to do that. Um, Michelle, is that okay? I'm asking you as the town clerk, uh.
Yes, um, I would just point out she put her hand down. I believe she had raised it so I could promote her to panelist to give her presentation. And her hand is now down. Realizing that this item is not going forward.
And if, if I may, I'm sorry, this is Janet. If you're not going to open the item, you shouldn't hear from anybody. And I realize she's the presenter, but you should not hear anything on the item. You want it all in the record. And if you're not going to open the item, you shouldn't hear from anybody.
Well, Laura's hand is down anyway.
Okay.
So with apologies, because as I'm looking at the list here, I see a number of people who are up this late because of this item. So it, it feels bad to me to continue it, but, um, but I, I see the point that this is going to be, I do anticipate this is going to be a nuanced discussion. It's not going to be a slam dunk by any means, so.
Can I make the motion to continue it, Mayor?
Okay.
I think we need to do a vote on that.
I guess so, yeah. Go ahead and make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue it to time to be decided in the future, whenever that is.
No, I'd like to amend that.
Um, he's going to work with the town manager on a special meeting.
Well, hold on a second. I mean, we put a date on the smoking ordinance one. You were very specific about continuing to that date. And that effective date isn't until, I don't think, 2023. So, you know, I'd like to, we are in a water crisis and I'd like to commit to recognizing the urgency and getting this on the calendar for either the 20th or sooner. I don't know, but.
Okay, I'll take that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Um, I'll take the roll call. Uh, Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Just continuing that, I think you already said you wanted to do that. Um, Councilmember Kohler.
Um, yes.
You made the motion, so.
I'm sorry, I, I usually don't get called on so quickly and.
Uh, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, to keep it simple. All right, and we will try to get this on an agenda of some sort ASAP. Okay, so moving on to our item 13, which is kind of related. And I could ask for a staff report, but I can just say this was, I, I was on the mayor's select committee, which is just the committee of the mayors that does some selection. That's why it's called that, of the MCCMC. And that committee voted to create this ad hoc committee. Ad hoc, meaning that it's going to have an end date in about a year. This committee will be over with. So it's an MCCMC committee, Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Committee that would have up to two designees from each council. Councils don't need to designate anybody. Some councils may not even participate in it. Or we could designate one person or we could designate two people, but we, that's what we can do. And it's a committee to look at water policy. There was some discussion on MCCMC about, um, whether to do this committee or not. But whether this committee made sense because we've got Marin Water thinking about water policy. But the decision was made by a strong majority, not unanimous, but a strong majority of MCCMC to take that recommendation and go ahead and stand up this committee. So that's what this is about. And I'll just ask for any other, uh, anything else that staff would like to add to that. And then we can discuss that and make our appointments if we wish to. Sorry.
There's nothing further from me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Except that you're, it's to appoint one or two members to the committee.
Okay, and this, this committee is about water policy. Um, there was actually a clarification that I made at the meeting of the, of the mayor's meeting when that committee was first brought up. Because in the staff report for the mayor's select committee, it said that the, the, uh, the water policy committee that we're talking about here could look to such examples as the Fairfax Water Conservation Proposal. And I needed to make the clarification that that proposal was only a proposal at this point. We had not discussed it yet. We were going to discuss it tonight and we've now tabled it, but that's, um, there's a linkage in there and that that committee was kind of interested in what we were proposing, but we haven't done it yet. And we've got a lot to work out on that proposal, including possible collaboration, whatever. But anyway, there's that linkage there, but nonetheless, I think we should go forward and see if we want to appoint one or two council members to that committee. Um, I'm open to nomination.
I'm with appointing someone, I'm, I'm not stepping up. I'm sure others have a lot of interest in this. And I'm sit on quite a few committees, so, um, and I don't think I'm the expert. So there.
I'd like to nominate Vice Mayor Hellman.
Thanks.
Okay. I think.
I, I would nominate, uh, Councilmember Catrano only because he even raised his hand at the general meeting of the MCCMC, which showed that he is very enthusiastic about this project. Um, so unless I'm wrong, that would be, I would, I would be happy to nominate, uh, Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Catrano.
I'll second it, if that's a motion.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing Councilmember Catrano nodding, so taking that as a yes. I love that nomination. And, uh, please make the motion, Barbara.
Oh, I, I think Renee did. I just seconded it.
All right, okay, great. So the motion is that we appoint Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Catrano to the ad hoc water policy committee. And, uh, uh, Michelle, would you please take the roll call on this important vote?
I'd be delighted. Councilmember Kohler.
Uh, yes. I'm sorry, I'm half asleep. I usually am awake more, but thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes, with thank you, gratitude.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes, and just to say, I'm also usually awake.
And that's, motion passes.
Okay, that actually completes our agenda, such as we, uh, left it after tabling three items, but that was a good plan, I mean, a good meeting. So we, we got through a lot. Um, council reports and comments, I, unless there's anything anybody would like to add verbally, they're all in the packet, um, in written form. And, uh, Adam, if you'd like to say anything as far as the town manager's report at this late hour? Other than, oh, we need another meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just make a few very brief comments and, and you're absolutely, um, working with the agenda setting committee. We'll need to look at, um, adding at least one more special meeting. You know, we're at the time of the year as you look towards October, November, December, where we're trying to get a lot of business done. And we have big items, if, when you look at the future agenda items that are forecasted now. You know, so, uh, it really is going to, um, require us to look at potentially other day, other days of the week than Wednesdays, um, based on, on how we're going. So we'll work with the agenda setting committee. Most importantly though, and, and why I came on with a smile and why I wanted to share this is I really want to recognize and appreciate how well you all work together. Uh, these are difficult discussions. These, and, and you're all serving on so many different committees. And the value that I received working with you all, uh, has helped me lead our team uh, in this interim, uh, interim role. So it really does start with the tone that the five of you set, um, as we, as we push forward. And we are bringing important meeting items for discussion. Uh, it's a good problem, um, to, to have these important items brought forward. We just don't have enough time, um, because there's so many to get through them. But that should not deter us, um, they're important. We just got to figure out how to get them scheduled. And as we continue to use this forecasting tool, you know, especially as you go into the next year, um, I, I think it will become very useful, uh, as, as we continue to move forward with it. And lastly, um, as we heard several very nice comments from you all in the public, I, I, I really want to underscore how important it is to recognize how hard staff is working and, and pulling, uh, information to working day to day on the daily stuff that doesn't normally get recognized. But clearly when they bring reports of substance to the council, your recognition and appreciation about their hard work is really important. So thank you and thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
It's been great working with you and at this time of the night, we need some encouragement. So thank you for that. Okay, um.
Adjourn.
It is time to adjourn and in memory of Raymond Piambo.
A long time for Fairfaxan. So many, I think 40 some years. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for, um, being great colleagues. Good night.
Good night. See you soon.
Good night.
Thank you.